My first time getting to hit that. Some good acoustics in this room. All right, we're going to call the Lord of the Town of St. Andrews Special Council Meeting here at 6:30 PM. Had our new council chambers at the courthouse on Frederick Street here in beautiful St. Andrews. I guess just to start before we get into the actual recording of attendance, I just wanted to acknowledge staff for the setup that we have here. And I hope that everybody that's tuning in can can hear us clearly. We're testing some technology this evening, so you'll have to have some patience with us. But to be able to meet again in person, let's just say it's it's long overdue and welcome. So again, bear with us as we we go and work through our technology. So starting by recording of attendance, I note that all members of council are in attendance. We do have three that are joining us virtually, but we do also have three members of council and myself present at the courthouse. At this time, I will look for someone to move to approve the agenda as circulated. I see Counselor Heenan. Do I have a second or I see Counselor Hurdle between Zoom and looking back and forth? This is going to be quite challenging this evening, I just realized. All right, so we have a mover and a second or any changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Seeing none.
On your agenda, do you have the formation of committee of counsel for appeals and the schedule?
We do have the schedule for appeals and schedule be on our agenda. No problem. All right, disclosure of conflict of interest. Does any member of council wish to disclose a conflict? And this is just specifically for the 6:30 PM meeting. Seeing none. So at this point, we're going to move right along. There's no presentations for this meeting, so we'll move into introduction, consideration and passing of bylaws and motions. And the first one would be the RFP for the fitness center discussion. So at this particular time, we will pass it over to to Mr. Spear, Mr. Knopper to take us through that and what's required of council.
Thank you, your worship. I'm actually going to pass it to Cao Spear as he was the beginning of the RFP process and has some greater detail for discussion.
Thank you, worship. So before you is two different RFPs for fitness center. I've worked with the ad hoc committee formed, I think, three weeks ago with the deputy mayor and Counselor Hurdle that had read through it and provided some insight. And so now you have the documents before you. One question that has come up front that I just needed some direction on was that there was two possibilities of how the RFP can go out. One is more general that looked at various possibilities of types of fitness centers. So this could be, you know, calisthenic studios and bicycling or whatever, or something that was very specific to gym based equipment, so weights, medicine balls, rowing machines, et cetera, anything along that lines. And so from my my, when I originally issued this couple of, about a year ago, it was very generic and it got more things that were service based instead of equipment based. So I just want to get some feedback from council if you want to put out the RFP that is specifically looking for a fitness based equipment facility. If I can get that feedback tonight, we don't need a motion, we can issue that ASAP.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spear. So looking for some consensus here. So a general model, I think that we've got some indication early on that there's opportunities for maybe it used as almost open space to do classes. And then there's some specific on maybe some gym equipment. I see Counselor Hurdles hands up, so I'll pass the floor over to him.
Thank you very much. So first off, thank you for the work that you put into this. Obviously, you've you've been down this road one time, but more than I have. So I'll defer to your expertise with this, but my hope, I guess, in response to your question is that if we were to cast a more general net, we might encourage someone to give us a more creative response. My fear is, I think, if we get overly specific of what we're looking for, we might be, you know, counting out some some suggestions or some proposals that might otherwise get caught in that net. So again, of course, you've you've already tried that method. So if you know, if you feel strongly that, you know, we've been down that road already, of course, we'll go that way, I think. But my hope is that, you know, we get some more creativity if we make it more general.
Thank you, Counselor Hurdle. Any other member of council? I see Counselor Gou Michel.
Thank you, worship. I'm sorry I wasn't around to serve on the committee. I do. I do hope that we can develop some sort of gym that that has a pass. So whoever's running it would, you know, maintain it and whatnot, but it would be available like from early in the morning until late in the day, kind of like the model that they had in St. Stephen. And perhaps like the old Algonquin gym could be run partially with volunteers and would be a real community, a community space for for going. But that sort of model, I think, is more equipment based. So that would that would be my preference. And I know when we were developing the medical center, former counselor Harrison was hopeful for that model as well, because we're going to hold him to it. He was going to start working out if we got a gym in town. So just putting that out there for former counselor Harrison. And that was the kind of model that that he was hopeful for. And that's the same, that's a similar model, I think, that that we should be looking for. The Human Performance Center in Grand Bay has like a doctor's office and a physiotherapy center adjacent to a gym. And that gym runs in partnership with the medical center, but it also runs independently. And that would be, that would be, I think, ideal for our our facility as a general wellness wellness center. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Counselor Gou Michel. Any other member of council? I see Counselor Heenan.
Yes, your worship. I believe with Counselor Gou Michel, I think it needs to be a community based approach versus specific. I would like to see it that it would be available to all citizens of St. Andrews. So a community based model for me works very well. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Heenan. Any other members? So definitely some good input. So all, oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Akji.
Your worship, I'd like to go along with the community based one, like especially if it's based on like the Algonquin where everybody was involved and and were able to go to it. So I'd like to see that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else? So I guess my comments would be that it's it's obvious that just from hearing from council that community base is is preferred. But with, I think, what Counselor Hurdle said had a lot of a lot of way. We have done a request for proposals in the past and we unfortunately didn't actually get any submission. So we restrict the submissions. It's less likely that you're going to get options. So if you open it up and let them know that you are looking for a community base, but you're looking to make it more general so people can be creative, I think you're going to have some some things that the committee can look at and recommend for council. So I'm going to look for some consensus that we're looking for more general. But again, the preference will be given to community base. Would that be safe to say? So I'll just show hands just if you agree with that statement. And does anyone see it differently? No, that's everybody. So is that enough direction for you, CEO Spear?
Almost, but I guess I'm trying to struggle. What exactly do you mean by community based? Because when I put this together to put it out, it was sort of looking as a standalone business. And so now if you're incorporating volunteers and things, it does change more the business model and the services they're offering.
I'll look for council with head nods and hands again. But what it means is that we want the submissions to be creative and the fact that they can submit what they think is best. But at the end of the day, what we're hoping is to have an offer on the table that would give people access to come and go as when they want versus restricted to these are the specific class times. So almost a pass system. So if you're working eight to five or nine to five and you got to go in the evening, you're available. But also if you work nights, you can stop in early in the morning and get your work in. And we need the flexibility for all residents. Does that make, does that make sense? But we don't want to limit it. We're we're open to hearing all suggestions because based on last time, we didn't even have an option to debate. So that's what they mean. They don't mean necessarily like volunteers, but just a general access versus restricted hours. That be safe to say?
But with any type of services, when I hear general, as opposed to just.
It can be, yeah, it can be general. I think what, at the end of the day, what I think majority of council is actually giving preference to is a facility that you can go out on your own without an instructor and actually get some exercise in. Would that be safe to say by everyone council? That's what the preferred method is versus these are the two times a day that we have classes. Like, I think it's more of a gym model, but it doesn't have to be your traditional workout gear. It could be just exercise bikes. It could be, it's what, you know, be creative to what is in that, but to have the flexibility of when people can go.
No, certainly worship. One thing that we have incorporated is the fact that we have so much extra space available at the arena upstairs in the dining room and things that using creatively, you know, not just that space downstairs, but then able to incorporate that space upstairs for classes and stuff. So that'll be included as part of proposal.
Yeah, that's that's if we have extra space, we can certainly maximize it. And even with some creative, you know, start small, someone might have to start small, but they might be able to do a hybrid model between both of them and have a little bit of area. But is that, CEO Spear, is that enough direction on that one, though?
Yeah, I think so, your worship.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Absolutely, Counselor Blanchard.
Just just with that, I just want to be clear, like I said, a preference maybe for something like that you said, where where people have more access to it throughout the day versus versus just specific classes. But we wouldn't restrict necessarily a proposal or we wouldn't eliminate a proposal based on that. It's just simply a preference that we would like to see. I just, I'm just worried, except based on some of the proposals that we had seen previously and and what you and what the previous council had gone through, where there were no real proposals that came through with that type of model. That would significantly change, I think, the business model of of at least the one that we did see that came through, where they would have to maintain staff or someone would have to be there throughout the day, right? Versus someone coming in and doing classes at set times throughout the day. So I just think that would, I wouldn't want to restrict anybody. But if the preferences is one way, then so be it. But I wouldn't want to see us restrict or eliminate a proposal based on based on that.
I agree, Counselor Blanchard. So preference would be the best way to to state it, but we're open for all general inquiries because at the end of the day, we have someone that just wants to do a spin class, you know, 15 times a week. And that's all we have in, we're going to consider it. So valid points, I think, I think it's more in when we actually judge the RFP we're talking right now. But overall, the consensus is to do it general and we're looking forward to seeing them. All right, just to keep it moving along, because we do have quite a bit to discuss as always. We're going to switch to the RFP on Champlain Avenue property PED 210807.
Thank you, worship. So we're going to be looking at two parcels of land as instructed by council, but we have split them into two RFPs to make it a little easier to work on each on their own. There's quite a long proposal here before you. And I don't think council wants me to necessarily go section by section or anything. But to be more specific, most specific, if you flip to page 39 or 38, I guess, of 62. The preamble and the first several sections talks about that there's a housing need of the town of St. Andrews, kind of a condition of a land, et cetera. And right there is the proposal that is that will be used by the committee to evaluate this. And the chances are it'll be hall of council. That's that's the committee. So as you can see, it's development density in proportion to suited to an efficient use of the land. So we're really looking for higher density units that were kind of, I won't say completely taking standalone bungalows or whatever have you off the table, but they, you know, they'd be awarded a lower point system. And then, you know, we're looking at timelines and looking for people to come up with a good concept by recognizing kind of the natural area, the buffers that are needed, but also taking into effect that there's a housing need. And specifically between this one and the next one, we do talk about needing an element of affordable housing that from staff's perspective, the studies that have been done over the last couple of years have shown that affordable housing is really what's in demand right now. And I think we've seen that through the lack of employees that have been able to find for our service industry as well as the lack of student housing. And so something around that lines as opposed to hire in for professionals is really what this, the scope of this is really awarding to at this point in time, unless it's modified by council. So if you flip a couple of pages to the 41 of 62, you'll see the land in particular. So up top on the appendix A, you'll see that that's Anchor's Landing. And then the land we're talking about that is below that is the pit, which is about the equivalent size of Anchor's Landing. Now, if you look at that lower, that lower piece of property in the top right hand corner here, this is undeveloped property. The town's always held on to that knowing that, of course, we basically don't have access to that rare lot. It's permanently, or it's currently so service residential, but the expectation would be be all consolidated into a multiple residential zoning and and land development. Unlikely, someone may come up with something really original that they can put something there and still put in a driveway. The whole parcel there would likely to go to multiple residential parts or housing.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Spear. So council, you had this RFP before you. Is there any questions or concerns at this point from any member of council? I see Counselor Blanchard.
Just a question on the the map itself. How accurate is the is the grid as marked out there? I see the lower portion of that PID actually seems to run right through someone's house, actually. So I'm curious, where exactly does that line fall?
The line's good within, I think, two to three meters. It's not a dead bone accuracy.
Yeah, the Geo and Beeline lines are never 100% accurate. It also sometimes depends on how zoomed in or out you are. They'll be using different satellite imagery. So sometimes we'll zoom in and a new camera will be used and then it will, the house will shift over by what looks like meters. So I think, I mean, probably would want to see if there's actually property pins. But I'm assuming this property was surveyed when it was subdivided. So there should be an accurate survey on on the title.
Yeah, chances are that Mr. Gopin is right that when Anchor's Landing was established, it would have been surveyed out because it was one large pit originally.
Counselor Hurdle.
Thank you. The the space in the, I guess, the bottom of the of the image that attaches to the road, is that wide enough for egress in and out? Or would it be kind of understood that the the pit to the north would be used for ingress egress?
It would be wide enough as per the subdivision regulation. I think public streets are sorry, but it probably would not become a public street. It would probably be a driveway. And as per the zoning bylaw, it is actually wide enough for a one or a two way driveway. So it could be used as egress. It could be kind of a loop with the other, the services eventual pit used as part of that, but it is it is an option.
Any other member of council? Not seeing any. Got to look around a lot right now. Zoom is a lot easier when everyone's Hollywood Squares. I guess my question on these, they'll be on both of them, is first of all, I see all the scoring and, you know, you guys have done due diligence and things like buffers and then being, I guess you could say, fitting in with the rest of the neighborhood landscape. How can we put this RFP out and make it perfectly clear that this particular area is for long term rentals or at least affordable housing versus the opportunity for people to get into short term rentals? Is there any way that we can, as part of this process, make that abundantly clear right now? I know that this council hasn't spent a lot of time, we'll talk about it later on, the short term rentals. But this council has been focusing on creating more long term rentals. That's that's the solution we've been going with. So how do we ensure that this investment, essentially what it would be if the town was able to come to the plate with services or land? How are we going to make sure that this is truly going to be what its purpose to do? Mr. Gopin.
I can speak to that, your worship. Would, the zoning is important in that, that's one way to deal with it. And currently it's MR2 zone and that zone does not allow for short term rentals at all. So that's one way that council could be relatively sure that this is not going to be used for short term rentals if it stays in that zone. The MR1 zone also doesn't allow for short term rentals. And the idea what we were thinking was so that exactly this large apartment buildings wouldn't be end up being used as short term rental kind of hotels almost. And I don't see any reason why that would change, except there might be in the MR1 zone. If you've got a single family residence on the property, maybe there's some allowance. But the actual apartment buildings, no, no zone allows for them to be used for short term rentals.
Perfect, so it's protected. So if we're if we're coming to the table, once we get all the RFPs in, we want to make sure that we hit the mark on what we're truly trying to accomplish here. So that is good to hear. Any other questions before? It sounds like there's no major concerns on what council has read. It's, it is very general. It does have some, you know, obviously indicates clearly the scoring, but it allows, I guess you could say, potential developers to be creative and find the solution that they think would be the best fit, most, I guess, say viable to be affordable housing in our community. So I do like the flexibility in it. Just doing one more round before we move to the next one. Oh, Counselor Heenan.
Your worship, thank you very much. I do appreciate your comments regarding the affordable housing and the long term rental. Those are my big concerns at this time is that we have some long term housing that's affordable so that we do not see spaces not available for people who want to live here. So I truly, I truly echo what you say, your worship, on the fact of, and Mr. Gopin, about the zoning restrictions. So that was one of my problems or one of my concerns and it was answered. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Heenan. All right, so it should be a very similar conversation, but we will move to the RFP on Diana Drive property PED 210809. I'll pass it back over to, unless that was kind of incorporated together in the conversation. They do look a little different, right?
Sorry, yeah, this one's a, we've got a little bit, I won't say challenges, but a little bit more questions we have for council on this one. So refer everyone, we're going to get staff is going to switch over the screen here just to have a look at it. And council, I'll say, if any of you have your mic on right now, these mics are kind of meant to only hit them when you're talking in them just because we are getting a bit of an echo, so if you're not actively participating, just put all those skills and Zoom muting into use here too and keep muting and opening it up. Feel I want to get up and walk over there, but I won't. So it's like me pointing at my screen. So I guess on this one, council, you'll see that that all those red lines. And as in life, red is always bad. But what's happening there is there is a proposal put in by a proponent that basically backed onto the ball field. And we could, you kind of see the ball field in the lower right hand corner there. And what the problem we found out with that is that the elevations are low. So why that's important is it means then you need to invest another $200,000 to $250,000 for what's called a lift station to move the sewage. So for water mains, there's enough pressure that you could still provide water, but you're going to have to lift the sewage into the main sanitary that comes from the subdivision and goes down into this water wastewater treatment plant or whatever Mr. Dr. Johnson was calling it the other day. So we we've decided that it's going to be kind of shifted more towards that little stub off of Diana Drive that's undeveloped. So I get Emily to switch over to the other drawing. So if you look at this drawing on the bottom, you could have just left it where it was. Sorry. Yeah, that's good. So in the bottom right hand corner there, you see that stub. So yeah, right there, Emily, thank you. That's the road that basically is undeveloped in a parcel, but there's two properties there. And so when we get across there is the land that we can really develop either to the right or to the left. Now, once, obviously, we talked about before, the state hectares, they're pretty much available. You'll see that in this conceptual drawing, again, conceptual drawing, that for now, that land that council had approved for a tentative purchase and sale agreement with the lodges in the left hand corner there near the ledge. And so we have to decide what, how much land you want to put up for this RFP. From my perspective, just to compare apples to apples, I thought, well, maybe we'll just do about the same similar size as the one up at Champlain Avenue, which is five acres. But that's just me. There's no rhyme or reason except to say it's about a five acre development that'd be similar to the one up top. So council is certainly able to offer more or offer less land on that. Now, the problem we run into, we've been talking to the planner about it, is that it's important that that road, that this conceptual drawing has probably been maintained in some format. The reason is, is if we just offer the land without that road being evidenced in there, then you're going to landlock the rest of the land or you'll have to create a new entry off of the bar road, which means you'd have to feed water lines from Moat Drive down there. And so there's various ways we can look at it. One way I'm saying to look at it is that maybe we put in the services on the road to split the parcels in half so that there's plenty of road frontage. And so if you remember, Mr. Corbin had given the given us a concept and, but he had like a bigger square parcel that we just put in the stub a little bit. And then he went back quite a ways and then created like a side streets. But if we do that, we probably risk putting, of cutting our own land off if you want to develop in the future. So what I'm saying is that maybe staff be given the permission to try to figure it out, but that maybe however much you want to do in whatever format it want to look like, but that we have something between five and seven acres. That's kind of the first phase of this conceptual drawing, which kind of maximizes from our perspective the availability of land and how many units you can put in there before you run into issues. Otherwise, if we just said you're going to offer five acres of relatively square property, you're going to run into an issue where you're going to get landlocked. But the other thing is to remember is that if you have property on both sides, it means only one pipe can service both sides of the road as opposed to you just put it all on the lower side, then you have to run the road a lot further in order to to service more buildings. So I guess our recommendation, and maybe Xander wants to talk about it more, is that we do the development of the road and services to a certain point to get the acreage that council was looking for. And then basically, it we are going to require that we don't donate the land that will favor those that actually don't pay for the services through the purchase of the land.
Yeah, I basically just agree with Mr. Spear there. I would have concerns about landlocking the rest of the property. And I think either the option where the town develops the services now with a longer process and a bit even more time, you could put in an application to CMHC, as we've discussed, and that kind of longer timeline that I've I presented. And it's likely they would be able to pay for the services or they would at least support the services, the road and the infrastructure under the road. They won't do that retroactively. So if the town goes ahead and develops the services without that funding, then they can, you know, hope that the developers will pay them back for that. But it's unlikely there would be any funding for that. So I think that it still might be worth it to do that. I think one other option would be to offer a parcel, only offer parcels on either side of the proposed road. So but you're still going to have to, they're going to need frontage to develop off of. So then that it's still kind of up to the developer to pay for it. So if the town does it, then it's at least getting sort of putting the the pieces in place for a developer to really work with.
Yeah, and I guess I want to follow up too with with Mr. Xander's com, or sorry, Mr. Gopin's comments is that we had talked and I'd forgotten that we had this longer development scheme bylaw we were talking about in the future. And that's something we could probably work on this fall. As he says, we could work on that as well as get funding from CHMC, go through that process. That will slow it down. I'm not going to say that. But at the flip side, the more financing we get through CHMC, especially if it's somewhat below mortgage, but some of it could be granting, it'll help lower the cost for everybody. So it starts to make the process of affordable a little easier or more attainable as opposed to trying to rush through it in the town, putting it all in, either having to eat it it through long term services and stuff, or hoping that some developer will come along and pay top dollar or, you know, what we need to recover. But again, that's going to have to go into his rental fees in order to to make his ends meet. So it's kind of that circle. But again, it will slow the process down some. So I guess we need. But again, it will slow the process down some. So I guess we need instruction to how you go. I mean, another way you could look at it, although it's not a lot of units, because each of those little squares, like where the mouse is, those are really tight, tight lots that are probably just small garden homes. And so, you know, just so aware of that, we could just offer them, for instance, on the right-hand side of the road and the left-hand side, just a little bit to get something started before we develop the bigger project. But that's why Steph, it's really up to council to give us direction. You know, I say, if you give it until early next year, we could probably go through the development scheme by law. We'd have to work hard at it because of the budget time, but work through that process, get an application in, which we probably could do sooner rather than later, because we do have some estimates already from budgeting and from CBCL, if you remember. So we know how much it's going to cost to develop all of this thing and start that process simultaneously. But it will slow it down some. We released the RFP after Christmas. By the time developers get back to us, created it, give them a go ahead, it could be late 2022, early 2023, before shovels in the ground. Just, just to be completely upfront about it. But if affordable housing is your key concept, it might be the best route to go.
Thank you, Mr. Spear, Mr. Gopin. So this model, the way that the road's running makes complete sense from a traffic flow perspective versus landlocking it and forcing them all to cut through the subdivision. This also could be for residents in the lower part of the subdivision. This could be another way to get out to the road quicker versus go up through the top and, you know, get into a bunch of other things, emergency vehicles, things like that. Having multiple ways to get out and in is certainly an advantage. So I, I hear you on the development scheme, but I guess my question is, where the mouse is, that, that, that piece of, I guess you could call it dark green or, or wherever. It's not possible for council at this point to issue the RFP on that land and then worry about the rest after and just agree that we would like to put the road through as part of that. Do we have the flexibility of doing that? Or do we have to wait until the whole process is done? It's best for your recommendation?
No, the, you can do whatever you want, counsel. And like I said, what it just goes back to those first, let's just say, if Emily, like that first little stub that comes off of Diana, yeah, those three units and those three, let's say that's just the starter block you want to do. We'd put that in, but there wouldn't be any external funding available on that, but it would give you a start to create some type of housing. But again, without that extra granting, the affordability factor starts to, to go down. But here, I mean, the grant is only 10 to 15% of the total cost anyway.
It depends on the project. It can, it can vary. I think they'll go up to 50%, but it's, it is, it is variable. And, and I think as long as the RFP parcel isn't eating into that road, that future street, it's, I wouldn't have a serious concern about landlocking. I would just, it might be harder for a developer to figure out how they're actually going to get frontage and get driveways off of. There might have to be a discussion with like, they would pay for part of the road or something to bring it up. If you did the three at the very bottom, the town could do the extension of Diana and start there. You know, it's not quite as much infrastructure to put out for at the beginning. Uh, it's not going to open up quite as much land, but it, it opens up something. So you could see how that goes and then kind of continue. I think there was everything was moving along, but then that kind of the servicing wrench with the, the properties below the original land that Peter Corbin was looking at, the proponent was looking at. That kind of threw wrenches in the gears and, and my sense is if staff had more time, we could probably come up with something a little bit more complete and maybe a better recommendation. Does that make sense?
I'll, I'll look to other members of council. I'm just, with the RFP process, if we put one of these parts, it doesn't have to be that exact. Say it's longer, say it's shorter. But if we put it out there and we don't see what we're looking for through the RFP process for affordable housing, we do not have to award the RFP. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct.
So where my thought process is on this versus hold it back for two years, let's see what developers are saying they can do. They have their own funding. They have their own partners. And I will say that the more, you know, when you get into CMHC and getting grants like that, there's no question it helps make prices more affordable. But I also know what's happening right now is we have so few rentals in this community that people can charge whatever they want. So by pure demand and supply, we're going to help the problem. If we allow a development to put 15 more rental units in the town of St. Andrews, it's 15 more potential places for students that right now cannot come to St. Andrews to go. And it might not be the most ideal price, but that's what you have the development scheme on the rest of the property for. So that way it goes through the longer process. So that's just my, my thought process on that. But I'll, I'll open the floor to other members of council, uh, council hurdle.
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick question so that I understand the, the more we sort of open up to RFPs, the less CMHC funding we get access to. Is that correct?
I would say it depends on the timing, because you have to apply for CMHC funding before anything happens. So if you start putting in infrastructure now before an application to CMHC goes in, then you're not going to get any funding for that from CMHC. Whereas if you wait, it, it probably would take time and they would need actual site plans and because they, they become a partner in the project at that point and they're investing money into it. They would want what a lot of other partners would expect in a project. So it, it I'm trying to think of how you could, you could certainly do some of it with just an RFP and then the develop, the, the funding work could be happening in the background for, for, for further north portions of the project. So it could be a combination of it. Yeah.
My thinking was, you know, maybe a phased approach, but it looks like that probably wouldn't work in this circumstance since we have to kind of submit a full case to CMHC.
You could, you wouldn't have to submit for the whole property right now. You could submit RFP by RFP if you wanted to. And, and it was always my expectation that even with the CMHC funding, there would be RFPs involved too. It would just be, the town has already been able to secure funding for the road and, and this. And so, you know, your prices can be lower.
Thanks.
Any other member? Counselor Henin?
Yes, your worship. This goes back probably to a conversation we had earlier where we were talking about different phases of building. I'm really concerned with the election coming forth and CMHC's timing. I, I find 2023 rather late for the situation we're in right now for a phase. I'm not saying that we can't use CMHC for phases of development, but I think we need to get off the road running quickly on at least to relieve some pressure of our housing crisis that we have. I don't think, your worship, that we can afford to wait to 2023 for the shovel to go into the ground and then two more years or a year and a half longer to, to construct. I, I, I see that as another disaster. And as I said, when we first talked about housing and affordable housing, we talked about doing phases. I still believe there's a place for CMHC development, but I do see that we need to hit the road running on trying to do something to alleviate our, our crisis at this particular time.
Yeah. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Henin. The other concern that I have is that right now I know of at least three developers that are expressing interest in doing something in the town of St. Andrews. I can't guarantee you in two years, they're going to be here expressing interest in doing something in the town of St. Andrews. Deputy Mayor Akagi.
Thank you, your worship. I think as Counselor Henin has said, we can't wait the two years. I don't know about you guys, but I've had a lot of people coming up and a lot of people emailing and calling and saying, you know, like right now, I just went through Tim Hortons and a little Filipino girl said, we have nine Filipinos coming in and no place to put them. And I'm thinking, yeah, two years is not going to help them. So I think as much as we can do now to start the process, I think we should be starting it sooner rather than later. Thank you very much.
I see Counselor Blanchard on, online.
Thanks. Thank you, worship. Just a question here. I, I know initially, you know, we had looked at a different parcel for one of the proposals, a previous proposal that had come through where that is not available now. We're sort of just shifting it up and we're still looking at the, at that sort of southern end of the, the proposed development. Where would it be more expensive to run new services? That southern section or the northern section on the bar roadside? Have we, I know we have sort of this rough plan. Nothing is sort of set in stone as far as I'm aware. At least we're just sort of proposals in terms of the layout and where different, we'd like to see different types of housing. Has there been any sort of consideration about the, the section closer to the bar road where we already do have, again, another proposal for Passamaquoddy Lodge and we'll likely be running services up there anyways. Does it make sense to sort of start at that end? And then when we do see CMHC funding, we can then extend that road in at the, at the, off of Diana and start to work it that way and sort of meet in the middle with that. Does that make any kind of sense? Or are we, are we, for the type of housing we're looking at, it just makes sense on that section off of Diana?
I'll defer to staff on that. Whereas the question is, do we go right to left or left to right on that parcel of land?
So what it comes down to, I guess, is money, which unfortunately sometimes always does want to get to. Emily's going to bring up the map just so we can see. So the problem is the services right now end at Charlotte and Champlain. And so there's a long run there to get that down to that other end and it, there's nothing on the bar road for services. So you potentially have to go to Moet. So way back when they were running services along Diana back in the early 2000s, they put a stub in that little area in the bottom right-hand corner. So financially, that is the cheapest, if you want, or the most efficient place to put services right now. And so it's really just a matter of, and somebody might be able to get more creative than this diagram, to be honest, but we just have to remember we wanted, it'd be good to keep that flow of traffic going through. And so what we were talking about earlier, about that sort of property that's further south, if you will, or southeast, that's not on this particular map, but we're saying the elevation is too low. Anything can be fixed with money, but if you're going to use the word affordable, anything can be fixed with money, don't work together. And so that's why it's had to be shifted. And frankly, that other area we're talking about also is a fairly big wet area that's used for the drainage of the subdivision. So besides, besides sewage, you'd also have stormwater to deal with. You know, in Cemetery Road, those big culverts that kind of cross before you hit the ball field, well, that water's coming from that area roughly. So then they'd have to deal with that, circumvent that. So it, you know, again, anything can be done, but it's just too costly and too inefficient considering the rest of the land we have there that kind of meets our criteria. So I guess that's why staff were thinking and the developer may come up with something that we're not thinking of, but it's back to that we kind of have to keep the easement for the road going there. And just council has to instruct us on exactly how much land we want to use to go. And I would agree that if we realize this is a problem now for housing and that the process is going to take time, there's no doubt about it, that the first phase might want to be just to create X amount of units, but staff just needs to know how much parcels you want to give out. Now, the thing to remember too, the way this is divided there, which is just a conceptual drawing, it doesn't necessarily mean this is what the final product is going to look like as far as what types of housing is going there. So be less concerned about what type of housing there and how much land you want to be able to put out to an RFP for someone to come back to with exactly what they want to do with it.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. The section that's in the dark green to the left of the, I guess it's called the, the road extension. How many, do we know roughly how many acres the dark green, not the right side, but the left side of the road, that side right where the mouse is? Do we know how many acres that is?
One and a half to two acres, believe it or not.
And would you be looking at us to continue down the left side or use both sides of, because are we getting into the gravity issue on sewer on the right-hand side there, I would assume?
Yeah, it's getting close. We'd have to look a little closer at that. But I'd have to talk because that would be my preference would be to put buildings there too, for the same reason. If you're extending services, then you're going there. Then we'd probably go right where the mouse is, or the top section where that's purple to the right. That's actually a green area, or sorry, a green space, literally. That was just part of the conceptual drawing, not necessarily a building lot. So that may or may not exist. But what we might be able to do, I don't know if you want to release it right away, but we could look at how much of that total parcel kind of equals four to five acres on all sides of the road? That would kind of make it equivalent to the parcel that we're talking off of Diana and give you a better idea. But from my recollection, I think it'll go pretty near to the end of the purple section on both sides to get that much, but I'd have to double check. So you're talking a fairly substantial part of the road.
And would it be safe to say that developing the length of that road would be equivalent to the 200,000 almost that it would take to put in the pump station? Because as you extend that the whole way, would it not add more and more every, every meter that we're going?
Agreed, but the problem you're going to run into with the others is still, we haven't priced it out how much it is to run services the other way either. But we can look at both scenarios and get back to you next meeting, what we found out.
Perfect. So I'd look for some council consensus here, but I don't think we want to do an acre to an acre and a half. I think you want to make an impact. Myself, I think your original recommendation to make it similar to the size parcel of land at the top of the subdivision, we'll call it. So up by Champlain. I think that that makes the most sense. And just from conversations, there's no, been no formal RFP. But a couple of the different developers have made it clear that they are looking to make a big impact. They're not looking for a small four or five units. They're looking for 15, 20 units. So I think that we need to swing for the fences on this one. And again, if we don't like what we're seeing, we can always pull it back. But the fact that there's multiple people looking at that land right now, I think we need to go for it. So I'm just looking for council consensus to recommend to staff that we devise a plan and I understand that we should have it out there. We don't want to landlock this. But yes, Counselor Hurdle.
I just wanted to clarify my, my, my earlier comments just a little bit, that I also share the same sense of urgency that Counselor Akagi and Counselor Henin expressed a moment ago. Talking about phases was really just, you know, a hope that we could progressively open up more land development faster as opposed to waiting to the 2023 deadline. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification. All right. I see Counselor Neal's hand, actually.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to state like I, at the moment, looking at that conceptual drawing, I would certainly be in favor of the lower section, developing the lower section first. And the reason I say that is I just, after, you know, we just entered into this land agreement with Passamaquoddy Lodge Group. And until we, I guess, have a little further consultation with them as to where their proposed layout is actually going to be, I'd be hesitant to run that road all the way up there. Simply because at the moment it's actually running through the proposed Passamaquoddy Lodge land. Like in this drawing, they've actually flipped that 180 degrees, which is not the way the Passamaquoddy Lodge presented it to us, nor do we actually know exactly where they're going to put their layout. So for that reason, I'd be a little hesitant to go all the way up because it would almost kind of pigeonhole them to what they can do. And the way it's laid out here, having flipped them 180 degrees is actually putting in an extra road. It's actually bringing all the traffic into the subdivision, which is exactly what the Passamaquoddy Lodge Group did not want to do. So I would be in favor of starting with the lower section. But until we have a little bit more consultation with, with the other group, I, I would be hesitant to, to put that road all the way through to the bar road.
Thank you, Counselor Neal. I do concur on that. This does show that it would be accessed through Champlain Avenue versus Bar Road. So that's, that's a very good point. So just on that, I know staff, there's some work that needs to be done, safe to say, but would it be safe for council that we know the area that we're looking at right now, we're looking for five to six acres, probably similar to the top? Does anybody have any concerns with staff coming, taking this back? You know, ideally we do this yesterday, but we only have one opportunity to do this. So let's do it right. So staff to take back the will of council. We don't want to wait two years is what I'm hearing. We would like to try to get five or six acres out as soon as possible off of Diana Drive at the bottom that for, for RFP to see what's out there. So staff, do you think that that, that's good enough direction? And, and that gives you a little bit of scope of the size of the project that we're looking for?
Certainly, counsel, but did you want us to bring it back to next meeting? You just want us to get at it and get it issued?
Next meeting is obviously ideal because the sooner the better, but in the same sense, I don't, next meeting, the package comes out on Wednesday and Friday. Sorry. Oh, sorry. Cause we're Wednesday. So you've got a week, a week goes pretty quick.
We probably won't. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I'm not going to put you on the shock block. Why don't you come back to us as soon as you can? Cause to say I need it by Friday just doesn't seem fair when it's a major community project like this. Because to say I need it by Friday just doesn't seem fair when it's a major community project like this. Now, I don't think we want to, does it make sense to do these RFPs at the same time? Or can we issue one and the other?
Actually, staff were talking about this earlier and either or. But we're thinking, instead of overwhelming everybody with two RFPs, if you even put them in consecutive weeks out, you don't have to finish one and the other. But it means you could take one, go through it and figure it out. And then it's kind of out of your mind when you jump to the next one and grade that. So you could still combine them as far as looking at them over a couple of weeks. But, but having separate closing dates isn't going to hurt it. In fact, it may make it a little easier for everybody.
Okay, so the, the, the short-term delay on this is not going to have impact on the other one. I think council feels comfortable with that. So is there anything else on this particular one? I think we've got some direction for staff. Counselor Goumichel.
Could we go back to the, I'm just, I don't have a paper copy. Could we go back to the slide that shows the, the lots that, that are below grade?
Yeah, just one other thing, while Emily's doing that, sorry, counselors, to remind everybody that council won't be in a silo making these decisions either. At a certain point, there'll be public consultation, possibly public presentations, including the development agreement. So if people are seeing this or starting to wonder a little bit, there's still going to be other opportunities to have input from the public before council makes any final decisions.
That, that's a good takeaway. And same goes for the top off Champlain is we don't, we can't do consultation because we don't know what we're presented with today. But there will be a process to make sure that the neighborhood is aware. And of course, if there is any variances required, they're going to be aware through that process as well anyway and have obviously an opportunity to provide input. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate that. I think we're ready to move. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Counselor Goumichel, you actually had it. You, you want to see the diagram. I assume there's a question with that. Thank you.
Just, you know, like, it's very wet down in there and just wondering how, how that would all, how that would all work with, with drainage and all that sort of thing, putting in a road while maintaining the green spaces that were in that first conceptual drawing. And then also having, you know, it's, it's important to get at all this, but you also want to maintain, you know, your green space and your development and leave room for sidewalks someday for kids on bikes and stuff like that. So yeah, we're in a hurry, but we also want to get it right.
Thanks. The question was on the drainage and having enough proper space for the road width for things like sidewalks.
Well, we'll have to go back to the engineering drawings, conceptual drawings. I think they did include sidewalk to them. Sanders is looking at it. They did. So that, that has been incorporated, at least at this point. As far as the, the drainage and stuff, that's the staff's concern as well in that parcel. And that may be a bigger project, to be honest, and council wants to take on. Because the engine, from the standpoint, the engineers may have to put a lot of study into that if we want to back it up that far down. We'll ask the questions and find out how much effort it is going to, to do that. But like I had said before, there's a fairly major stream that goes through there that basically drains from the retention pond. So they'd have to figure out how that's going to be underwater, just undergrounded essentially. So it's going to be a fairly substantial cost. So we can look at it, but there, if you look at it where that top, Emily, just sort of that start of the corner there, that red line, kind of in the middle, yeah, that's kind of the front edge of where Mr. Corbin was asking for. So it becomes a real problem to back it up behind that.
All right, some more to come on those answers to those questions.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at it a little deeper at the engineers. But they had done that drawing, as you can see. I know it's hard to see here and I'm sure the public can't see what each of those boxes say. But this is all the elevations and all the concerns they had with the sanitary. But everyone was aware of the underground concerns with the stormwater too. So we'll also ask that question.
Counselor Goumichel, I can't see you. So is there any other question that you have?
Thank you, worship. That's great.
Thank you. I'll just do one last quick look around the table, make sure everyone's good before we move to the next one. I'm seeing that we're good. So at this point, we will move to the next item, which would go to Planning and Economic Development Committee, which would be Counselor Heenan. Or, or sorry, yes, that's correct. Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Spear.
Sorry, Counselor Heenan. People may ask about seeing draft copies of the RFP. We'll probably not issue those at this point in time till council's finalized it. When it's issued, it can't be put on the web because of the way tenders are put. You've got to be able to track them. But we, you know, if people want to call in, because if we make changes to them, we've got to figure out who has them so they are aware of the changes. But once it's issued, if the public has an interest in them, they can register to get a copy. So if we make changes, we can also continue with it.
Perfect.
Do you understand what I'm trying to say? Not so clear?
Yeah.
Okay.
A question on that, though, follow-up question is outside of some great reporters. How do we, how do we get the word out there that we're actually looking for all these calls for proposal? Because that's an important element to make sure that the community has variety.
So your worship, what we can do is we can issue out a notice of release of an RFP and give details to how members of the public can access the RFP. And from there, they can register with us and we can provide them with copies. We just need a tracking mechanism for the purposes of addendums or other. So it'll go out as a notice to the public. And we can do that through our social media, through newspaper, through website. And then from there, the public can ascertain from there to get information from staff.
Perfect. And would it be safe to say that staff has a budget in order to properly advertise for this?
That would be a problem, worship. But one of the best avenues is called the Construction Association. They keep their own website of all these open tenders and stuff. We fire it up there. Almost every developer in New Brunswick is going to see it at that point.
That's perfect. That's exactly what I was hoping here. Okay, we'll move on at this point to Counselor Heenan.
Thank you, worship. This is reference number PED 210810. Formation of a Committee of Counsel to Review Appeals Under Bylaw 19-04 Dangerous or Unsightly Properties. The town of St. Andrews has received an appeal notice from the property owner at 145 Princess Royal Street regarding a notice to comply under bylaw 19-04, a bylaw of the town of St. Andrews respecting dangerous, dangerous or unsightly premises under Section 7 of Bylaw 19-04. A committee of counsel needs to be appointed to hear the appeal from the property owner. It is recommended that the committee be comprised of three individuals that have background in building construction and building code processes. Staff through the mayor are making the recommendation. Mr. Chris Fleming, former member of PAC from 2003 to 2013. Mr. Jeff Cross, Chief Fire Investigator, Investigator for Justice and Public Safety, New Brunswick. And three, Mr. Gerald Ingersoll, developer and president of Ingersoll Consultory Incorporated. The motion, your worship, is that council appoint the following three individuals to the appeals committee for bylaw 19-04, a bylaw of the town of St. Andrews respecting dangerous or unsightly premises. One, Chris Fleming. Two, Jeff Cross. Three, Gerald Ingersoll. And I so move this, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Heenan. We'll look for, and we have Deputy Mayor Akaji seconding. So at this point, we'll open up the, the floor for discussion, but also for some potential questions, because this is something that might be new for some members of council. If they are not familiar with this process, it's not one that personally that I went through on the previous council. So it is new to me, but it is part of the process in which we have to in order to deal with such an issue. So I'll open the floor for debate or questions at this time. Otherwise, we'll, Counsel Hurdle.
Thank you, your worship. Would the committee be acting on behalf of the property owner or on behalf of the town?
They would, they'd be actually a neutral party that is hearing the case from the town, but also from the property owner and making a judgment. So that's why you have someone that's a former PAC member, someone who's obviously up to fire code and someone who's actually a developer and understands the building codes and all that stuff as well. They're all experienced individuals that have nothing to do with the file, but can make a judgment on behalf of the community.
Thank you.
And your worship, just to remind everybody too, that Jeff Cross was actually a prior building inspector for the town of St. Andrews in a previous life when he was fire chief. It's probably been seven or eight years ago. I think Chief Dario has been with us, so he does have experience on that side of things too, just not from the fire safety perspective.
And anyone else? I'm not very good at looking left. I think I have to go to Cairo. I think I need to go to Cairo practice.
Your worship, first off, I'd like to thank the staff for their work on this project. And the second point that I would like to bring forward is that we need, like everything else, we need to expedite this because it is posing, from my viewpoint of looking, a potential hazard to the neighborhood. So I would like to make sure that it's known that we need to expedite this and get it underway. And once again, the staff have been phenomenal in following up with this. So thank you, your worship.
Thank, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Akaji.
Thank you, your worship. I agree with Counselor Heenan to thank the staff, but I also want to thank these people who are going to be on the committee. It's a tough decision to be on and, but it's necessary. And I thank them for being the expertise that they have and bringing it to the table and also their judgment on what may happen in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Absolutely.
Counselor Goumichel, can you kind of respond, turn on your camera or something so we know that you're back with us? See your name up there.
He's there.
Thank you.
All right, no further, it doesn't appear anyone else has anything. So I will call the question. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. And anyone opposed? Seeing none, that has been carried. Moving along, the next one will be going to the Public Works Committee, which would be the Chair, Counselor Blanchard.
Thank you, worship. Reference number PW 210805. Subject is Amendment to Schedule B and C to Bylaw Number 18-01, a bylaw to regulate vehicular traffic in the town of St. Andrews for one-way, for one-way water street. On the background on that, in June of 2021, council motion to amend schedules B and C to Bylaw 18-01 to make Water Street a one-way street and modify parking along adjacent streets from June 25th to September the 7th. The one-way water street with nautical-themed barriers has been successful in slowing traffic in the downtown, providing safe avenues for delivery vehicles to unload and traffic flow to continue. And residents and visitors have learned to park on the left side of the road on a one-way street. The months of September and October are anticipated to see visitor counts remain at high levels with planned events that will draw people to the downtown. To maintain the safety for all visitors and residents, staff are making a recommendation to continue with the one-way water street with all parking requirements until October 18th, 2021, following the indulge events. The motion that council amend Schedule B and C to Bylaw Number 18-01, a bylaw to regulate vehicular traffic in the town of St. Andrews to extend parking, or sorry, to extend parking restrictions and Water Street as a one-way street until Monday, October the 18th, 2021. So I'll move by myself.
Thank you. Could I have a seconder for that one? Counselor Hurdle. All right, discussion, conversations on this one. I see, we'll have CAO Spear has something to add.
Just sorry, just a couple of things. I was in a board meeting with the chamber earlier today and they support this initiative. Although it's not part of the motion, we would like direction on the walkarounds too. Someone did ask if that would continue. Public work has no issue with that. So we just want to confirm with council if this is approved, if you're okay with those, you know, extended patios continuing on until then too.
All right, let's get some, I don't think we need to amend the motion on that one. That one's just some consensus. I, I would say that if they're using the space, I don't see how it's hurting it. If they're not going to, they're taking their patio chairs and I don't see why we'd have the walkaround. So as long as they're using it, I don't have any, I haven't heard of a single complaint all summer. I don't know if anyone has. No, so I, I'm not seeing anyone have any concern over that. So CAO discretion. All right, any other discussion on this one? Okay, I'll, I'll tell you that it's positive, it's positive when we haven't heard anything all summer. We'll leave it at that, some room experience. So I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oh, sorry. Deputy Mayor Akaji? Are you okay? This immediate left, it's. Might straighten my neck out. Anyone opposed? See, seeing none. That has been carried. Yeah, that's what I need, one right. All right, that wraps up the motions. There's nothing on our new business, so we're getting into question period. Is there any questions from anyone here in the audience? It's the first time I've been able to say that. Any questions? Looks like everybody's good. Thank you for being here. Any questions submitted online?
Your worship, I haven't received any questions via online or through email, so you may proceed.
Perfect. And at this time, any comments from any member of council? Just seeing if anyone online, I can't see them right now. And I'm not seeing any, any comments from the counselor. I'm good myself. No need to go to closed session, so I'll be looking for. Sorry, Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
You just raised your hand there after, did you not?
No. You were talking. No, I think I'm going to throw something in a minute. But you know what he said to me is that, I said, what do I get if I hit a mayor? And he goes, he goes, you get to be mayor. So I'm not going to hit him. I just wanted to say August 28th, which was Saturday, was a fantastic day. And I'd like to thank everybody who volunteered, everybody who worked at it, staff who, who coordinated it. And all the counselors and the mayor for participating. Kingsbury for, for hosting such a wonderful event as the awards. Everything went super even to the fireworks. So it was a fabulous day and I thank you. It's not quite as good as our Canada Day, but it was almost as good. So thank you very, 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 very much, everybody. And hopefully next year, we get our Canada Day back and have a great time. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. All right, so we'll go to a motion to adjourn. I saw Deputy Mayor Akaji's hand and I saw Counselor Goumichel's hand. All in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody. We are adjourned. Anyone, anyone online need a recess? I'm good to go if you are. Okay, I think everyone's good to go.
I can't hear anymore.
We're quiet right now.
Oh, quiet. I'm sorry.
Sorry, we're just taking a two or three-minute break, someone.
Because we need to, your worship, remember, we need to add an amendment to the agenda. CAO Spears report on fire, on the fire of paving. Yes, that needs to be added. Is it okay? Is it okay?
All right, we'll call the order. This is the Town of St Andrews Committee of Council meeting here on August 30th, 7:30 PM at the council chambers at the courthouse on Frederick Street in St Andrews. And it's also streaming online on social media as well, for those that want to be in attendance here. So we'll jump right into the agenda. I look for record of attendance. I note that all members of council are in attendance, either virtually or in person. And at this point, I'll look for an approval of the agenda, but I will just also look for actually an amendment as we have additional information here regarding to a paving request, PW201004. So I'll be looking for a mover to amend the agenda, I guess, to kick it off. I see councillor Hurdle and I looked to my left and I saw councillor Heenan first. All right, so any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, so I'll call the question. All those in favor of amending the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that has been carried. So the agenda has been amended, so we must vote now on the agenda, now that it's been amended. So I'll be looking for a mover on the agenda. Deputy Mayor Akaji, the seconder. Councillor Heenan. All right, discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, that is everybody. So the agenda has been approved. At this point, we're gonna move into disclosure of conflict of interest. Would anyone like to declare? When I see councillor Hurdle first?
Thank you, your worship. Just in regards to FA210810 and PED210808, that has to be excused for those two.
Thank you very much, councillor Hurdle. I'll look for you at that particular time, just to remove yourself. Since it is new to be in person, is there a particular area that CEO Spear, Mr. Nopper would like? So we'll be going into the judges' chamber there and on that, I will also be declaring a conflict of interest. So I'll be trying out that room as well. Mine will be in regards to Bylaw 21-05, a bylaw respecting the stopping up and permanent closure of part of Victoria Terrace Street. So I'll be, I'll be recusing myself at that time. I'll be looking for Deputy Mayor Akaji to my left to actually chair the meeting for that particular motion. All right, any other disclosure of conflict of interest? I see councillor Gomishel.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to accuse myself from FA210807. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can just, at that time, turn your camera and your, obviously your audio off at that time for yourself. Any other conflict of interests? All right, so those have been all noted and Mr. Spear will make sure to get those for the minutes. So we're moving along now to presentations, which we have none, no correspondence. So we earned the introduction consideration, passing of bylaws and motions. Just a reminder to council that we're actually not passing these motions. We're actually formulating the wording this evening. So we'll do a quick read through and if we like the way that they are, we will move it forward to next, next week's meeting on next Wednesday. So we're gonna go right to Deputy Mayor Akaji for finance and administration.
Thank you, your worship. The first one is FA210807. And it's the extended leave of absence for councillor Gomishel. Councillor Gomishel, and the background goes like this. Councillor Gomishel has requested an extended leave of absence from the town for, from July 14th, 2021 to October 22nd, 2021. As such, a motion of council is needed to approve a leave greater than two months. As per the Local Governance Act, Section 50, bracketed 1, a vacancy results in a council win. G, except in the case of illness or with the authorization of the council, a member is, one, absent from the government, local government for more than two months at one time. Or, two, absent from four or more consecutive regular meetings of council. Therefore, the motion is that council approves the extended leave of absence for councillor Kurt Gomishel from the town of St Andrews from July 14th, 2021 to October 2022nd, 2021, as per the Local Governance Act, Section 50, bracketed 1, bracketed G. And I so moved this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So at this point, does everyone feel comfortable with that motion going forward to next week?
Yes.
All right, that one will come forward to next week. We can move to the next one, Deputy Mayor Akaji.
Thank you, your worship. Next one is FA210808. And it is a policy for waiving or reducing fees for recreational facilities. And the background is this. The town of St Andrews has drafted a new policy, P-21-01, a policy for waiving or reducing fees for recreational facilities. This policy is to assist the non-for-profit charitable minor sport and service club organizations requesting a reduction of or waiving of fees for use of municipal facility space. The policy ensures consistency, equity and transparency in addressing a request for reduction or waiver of fees for the rental slash leasing of municipal facility space and equipment. Provided with this report is a copy of the policy for council review. Therefore, the motion is that council approves the town of St Andrews policy for waiving or reducing fees for use of town-owned recreational facilities, P-21-01. And I so moved this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Next time.
Any questions on this particular policy?
No, but there's a typo error. Organizations is not spelled right. Sorry, Paul, that's the teacher in me.
Okay, so that'll be noted for next week to be updated.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just realized that I looked at the screen, I can see your hand, Deputy Mayor Akaji.
You can.
So I can just look ahead now there, see? You just have to move them just like that. All right, that one is good to go ahead for next week with the friendly amendment.
Thank you. So continuing on, FA2108.
So, yeah, so the next one's just a conversation, right? It's about in regards to Truth and Reconciliation Day, correct?
Yes. Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yeah, so this one will be just a conversation. So I guess go over to staff, just to kind of talk a little bit about the staff report.
Thank you, your worship. Turn around a bit here. So as you know, the federal government declared, I think, just last month in July, early August, September 30th, to be National Truth and Reconciliation Day in regards to our indigenous partners within the Confederation. It's become what's called a federal holiday. So staff is just looking for instruction on how the town would like to observe it. In the past, federal holidays weren't observed necessarily by the town unless they're built into our, the provincial labor laws, the statutory labor laws, which as of the state, it hasn't been. What I did, discussions with probably a dozen different municipalities, about half of them were observing it, a lot of them because it was written into the language of collective bargaining arrangements, where those that fell underneath, that the workers observed both federal holidays and provincial holidays. But many weren't. Within the, with, in other industry, that banks, maybe councillor Hurdle can confirm this, but I believe they're closed. That's what I heard. Yeah, he's confirming that. Schools are open, surprisingly. That was as of last week, I was talking to a local principal and they hadn't gotten any direction. They said it might be a little hard because they've already had their number of hours of teaching hours, so they would probably harder to do that. Some of the cities will be closed. It's a combination. We just didn't know. Right now, staff isn't necessarily, from our perspective, asking it to have it off. We are working with the deputy mayor to have a lunch and learn where she'll provide some insight to our staff on why this day is needed and some of the issues that have arisen over the past, including the residential schools. So we'll be doing that either on the 29th or 30th. I will say that St George, Blacks Harbour and St Stephen are all planning on being closed because of collective bargaining language. And so we'd be kind of the only major municipality still operating. So I was just looking for direction from council. We didn't want to make any plans without, you know, getting your input one way or the other.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. So at this point, I see councillor Heenan's hand to my left.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to read what I got from UMB today. In honor of National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, UMB will be closed on September the 30th. This day will be treated as a holiday in accordance with our collective agreements and personnel policies. We encourage the UMB community to wear an orange shirt and dedicate some time for reflection or engaging in community-based indigenous-led events and activities. So I just thought that was a piece of information that would be appreciated. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor Heenan. Deputy Mayor Akaji.
Thank you, your worship. The indigenous peoples have been celebrating Orange Shirt Day, September 30th, for years. And they will continue to celebrate it in memory of residential school survivors. And so I think it's very important that we all wear orange t-shirt on that day. And if you don't know the background of that, it's very important to a little girl named Phyllis Walsted. She's not a little girl anymore, she's an adult. But she went to school very proudly when she first heard of going to residential schools. They went to the hardware store, bought a little orange t-shirt for her and off she went to school. When she got to her residential school, she no longer saw, saw her orange t-shirt again. So when she finally came out of residential schools and the indigenous peoples decided that September 30th would be the day for residential schools, they chose an orange t-shirt to stand out and remember all the residential school survivors, but also the ones who did not survive. As you know, they just found a school and actually they'll find more of over 200 graves of children that had been, have been missing. So it's very important that day for indigenous people, but for truth and reconciliation. It is a great recognition to have that. And I really feel that it's important that these people be remembered because they're no longer with us, but in our hearts, they are with us. And it is a tough time when September 30th rolls around. It's a tough time when memories come back because you never, ever get over the loss of a child. So every child matters is important and that was the key phrase that they chose, every child matters. So thank you very much and I hope that you will participate on September 30th, no matter what it is, wear an orange t-shirt. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Akaji. I certainly appreciate those comments and of course, the educational element for council and the public on that as there is a lot of people that wear an orange shirt, but it's also important to understand what it signifies as well. So thank you for that. For me personally, I think I'm gonna look for consensus from council. I actually think that we should actually, as a community, certainly recognize the day and I think that we should actually, to give direction to councillor Spear that the town office be closed and that it actually be a holiday for town staff as well. And when I say a holiday, it's obviously an opportunity to reflect and, and especially in light of what we, a lot of people, including myself, have had my eyes open this last year for history that I wasn't aware to what level has happened. So I would look for council support in making this a day off for staff in the town of St Andrews. Just looking, hands, anyone opposed? Okay, so that will, that, is that good for direction for you?
Yeah, just two things, your worship. First of all, I want to apologize. I put my thumbs up and it's because you called me councillor Spears or saying.
I called you councillor Spears.
Councillor Spears, so I didn't mean just for the day off, but it'd be misconstrued, so I want to apologize.
You are sitting in a council area though, right?
That's right.
Legal council?
That's right. But thank you, worship. You might see a motion next week just to recognize it, just in the package, just to keep it official. But thank you on behalf of staff and thank you to the deputy mayor who will attend the session on the 29th to inform staff of the importance of that day.
Perfect. And if there's anything we could do from an educational standpoint with a community as a municipality, I'd love to hear some suggestions as it is a day of reflection, not a holiday.
Thank you, worship. We'll work with the deputy mayor and hopefully Chief Akaji as well to get their input on this.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. We can move along to the next reference number.
Mimi? And it's 2021 Credit Facilities for Scotiabank. Council needs to make motions annually to continue our relationship with Scotiabank. Below are the credit facilities being offered for 2021. Operating loans under the Local Government Act, Governance Act, municipalities are allowed to set up short-term operating loans to cover their day-to-day expenses. The amounts are as follows. General operating fund, 4% of the general operating fund budget or $206,315. And the utility operating fund, 50% of the utility operating budget or $483,225. The above amounts are not taken out all at once. They are used only as needed to cover expenses until all the tax revenue or utility revenue is received. So the background goes like this. Term loans. The following loans have already been authorized by council in its application to the Municipal Capital Borrowing Board, as well as the board itself. These terms, these term loans allow us to finance the project until the work is completed and debentures can be issued. So number one, $140,000 for resurfacing roads. Number two, $300,000 to recondition the water reservoir. Three, $330,000 for Safiya and King's Water, for Safiya and King Water and Sewer Main Renewals. Number four, $10,000 for a backup water pump for the water treatment plant. Five, $106,000 for UV chamber upgrades at water, at the water treatment plant, aerator blower unit for sewage lagoon, portable generator for the lift station and commercial water meters. Number six, $48,000 to replace concrete walkway at the arena. Number seven, $600,000, including $200,000 for, of interim funding for trail improvements. Eight, $2,050,000, including $750,000 if interim fund in, that should be in.
In trip?
Of interim, interim funding for Market Square refurbishments. Visa. Currently, we only have one Visa card in the CAO's name. It has a total limit of $10,000 and is primarily used for travel reservations and online purchases. Motion, be it moved that the council approve the mayor or deputy mayor and the chief administrative officer or the assistant treasurer are hereby authorized to borrow on behalf of the town of St Andrews from the Bank of Nova Scotia from time to time by way of a promissory note, a sum of sums not exceeding at any one time to meet the current expenditures of the general operation fund, operating fund and $483,225 to meet the current expenditures of the utility operating fund of the corporation for the year of 2021. Is this acceptable?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So for that one, long one, I noted that in number eight, it should be $750,000 in interim funding, correct? Just as friendly amendment, so we'll just get that updated. But is there any concerns about this going forward? I don't think there's a way you can. I don't think there's a way you can shorten that background as all of those are vital to the actual motion, unfortunately, for you next week. Any concerns? Seeing that, that one can come forward. Next one, please.
Okay. Motion, be it moved that council approve the mayor or deputy mayor and the chief administrative officer or the assistant treasurer to hereby be authorized to borrow on behalf of the town of St. Andrews from the Bank of Nova Scotia from time to time by way of promissory note, a sum of or sums not exceeding at any one time $140,000 towards the resurfacing of roads and not exceeding at any one time $300,000 towards the reconditioning of the steel water reservoir and not exceeding at any one time $330,000 towards the water and sewer main renewals on King Street and Sophia Street and not exceeding at any one time $10,000 towards a backup water pump for the water treatment plant and not exceeding at any one time $106,000 towards the UV chamber upgrades and the water treat at the water treatment plant. An air a an airator blower for the sewage lagoon, a portable generator for the lift station and commercial water meters not exceeding at any one time $48,000 towards the replacement of the of the concrete walkway of at the arena not exceeding at any one time $600,000 towards trail improvements and not exceeding at any one time $2,050,000 towards the reconditioning of the of the steel water reservoir.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Quickly, just so it doesn't counterproductive, time savings, but is there any way since it's in the motion, we can drop some of that from the background? Because it clearly says all those amounts in the background in the motion that we just said that you know, the term loans piece, and then we added in the specifics in the motion with that. Yeah, let's, you know, I mean, it could save us five minutes. But if I talk anymore, I'm giving up the five minutes right now. So if you could do that, that would be great for Deputy Mayor Akaji. Next motion, please.
You just don't like me to talk. Be it moved that the council approved the acceptance of the Scotiabank Visa credit card with a limit of $10,000.
See, that's nice and short. Okay, that was that was looks fine. Any concerns from anyone on council? Okay, before we jump into Public Works, it would be the next portfolio. Just make sure that I got that. Yeah, we're good there. I'm just wondering if the insert that we added in the amendment, if we could do that first, that's the additional paving request, which should be public works as well. Does Counselor Blanchard have this particular motion? Okay, Counselor Blanchard, do you want to to go with that motion? If you have it before you?
The which we were talking about P W two one zero eight zero four, your worship?
Correct, the additional paving, yep.
I'll look to see additional paving. I have the stop. I have the stopping up motion.
It's, yeah, it's, it was the insert added in.
No, it was emailed to you, Counselor.
If you want, I can get Deputy Mayor Akaji to read it, then you can go with the rest of them just to stop you from from having to look because it was added after the fact. Is that okay with you, Counselor?
Absolutely, that's fine.
Okay, I'll pass it back to Deputy Mayor Akaji.
Okay, P W two zero one zero zero four. Counselor Blanchard is additional paving request. During the last budget time, this is the background, the council approved for $313,000 in paving, which included the boat ramp, half the fire hall parking lot, as well as new services on parts of Edward, Sophia, and King Streets. After a competitive bidding process, the projects came $113,000 under budget. Staff is requesting that council allow for another $40,000 to be spent from that budget towards finishing the second half of the parking lot of the parking lot of the fire hall. So the motion is that 40,000 be allotted from the 2021 paving budget to replace the back portion of the parking lot and driveway of the St. Andrews Fire Department.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any concerns over that motion?
I think that's great.
Good data. Good to see the saving. So we'll be discussing that next week. Thank you. At this point, I'll hand it over to Counselor Blanchard, but if you just want to give me about 15 seconds just to accuse myself, Deputy Mayor Akaji will chair the meeting for this particular motion.
Thank you, worship. And he's exiting stage, right? Okay, Counselor Blanchard, would you please continue with the public works?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you for reading the previous motion. I do see that now in my email just came
Oh, you're welcome.
About an hour and a half ago. So reference number P W two one zero eight zero four. Subject is a bylaw twenty one dash zero five, a bylaw respecting the stopping up and permanent closure of part of Victoria Terrace Street. The background for that, the town has received a request to permanently close a portion of Victoria Terrace Street for the purposes of a new housing development to be located at P I D one five one eight eight five four three. To close the portion of Victoria Terrace Street, council has to implement a road closure bylaw. Excuse me. Provided with this motion report is a copy of bylaw twenty one dash zero five, a bylaw respecting the stopping up and permanent closure of part of Victoria Street. In the motion for that, that council grant leave for first reading of bylaw twenty one dash zero five, a bylaw respecting the stopping up and permanent closure of part of Victoria Street or Victoria Terrace Street in the town of St. Andrews. Second motion, that council sets the date of Monday, September 27th, 2021, 6:30 PM at the courthouse at 123 Frederick Street for a public hearing of objections to bylaw twenty one dash zero five, a bylaw respecting the stopping up and permanent closure of part of Victoria Terrace Street.
Any objections to that? Any additions or anything? Okay, that's great. So now we can bring the mayor back in. Welcome back, your worship.
Stoke, Stoke.
Few Fitbit. Few Fitbit steps there. All right. At this time, it looks like we're not at a motion. It's actually the Environmental Advisory Committee Budget Request. Is that correct? Like to have a kind of a staff comment on that?
Yes, your worship, they will be presenting on September 8th. This was to provide background to council for their discussion and as well as for budget consideration. So at this time, we can move on if you would prefer.
Perfect. We will. We're going to discuss it next week. I will say that it was one of the most professional committee reports I've had in my time on council. It's very well constructed. So compliments to whoever prepared that. Then the next one would be the Wharf Project Final Design and Discussion. Is that more of a placeholder for next week? Or is that something that you'd wish to to discuss this evening?
Sorry, the technology's getting me. We can wait till next week, your worship. It's to give an update on where the Wharf Project is and what next steps to take. I will maybe let the public know and let council know that we got wording from the funding partners last week that due to the federal elections, it's kind of suspended the time that we need certain processes okayed. Specifically, indigenous consultation is part of this process, which is great. But my guess is it has to be approved by the minister at this time. And so with the dissolution of Parliament, there is no minister, I guess. So we'll have to talk about it, but there may be next to nothing done this year except design because it's going to be postponed till we can actually proceed probably till mid-October.
Sounds good. Extremely unfortunate, but completely understand the process and it's probably not a surprise to any of us once we heard the election was called that there'd be delays as a result. So yeah, we'd want to leave it for next week. Anything we could do, but anything that you need of council in the meantime, we're waiting for them to kind of get sorted out. So that way we're not having any delays. Once they are ready to go, we're ready to go is the hope. So we could talk about that next week. We're moving on to Public Safety with Counselor Neal.
Thank you, your worship. This is reference number P S two one zero eight zero three. The subject is a nuisance deer hunt for 2021. The background reads, the town of St. Andrews has started to receive calls on the application of landowners and hunters for the 2021 nuisance deer hunt. To move forward with the hunt in the town of St. Andrews, council must formally request permission to host the hunt from the Minister of Energy and Resource Development. The motion reads that council moves to request permission from the Provincial Minister of Energy and Resource Development for approval of a 2021 nuisance deer hunt within the town of St. Andrews limits.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That is an annual process that's required. We have to do that every every year. There's a few motions like that that we have to do every year, and that is one of them. Is there any questions on the wording or anything for next week? Okay, we're good. We'll move that one forward. I think a lot of people are looking forward to that one. So I note that there's nothing under Business Tourism Heritage and Cultures. So Counselor Hurley had the night off. Recreation Community Service, Counsel Goomishell, they are just discussion items, though. The first is the St. Andrews Outdoor Recreation Trails Request for Funding Trail Maintenance. Did you want to discuss that tonight or take it forward to to next week, Mr. Spear?
Well, I guess the question is, your worship, did you want us to prepare a motion? Because they are asking for some funding this year. So did you want us to have a motion in waiting or just continue to discuss it?
I I think we should probably discuss it just to find out if we want to bring a motion forward or not, just to just to defer all these conversations for next week. This is one we can probably get some consensus on tonight for you. So that way we're just not putting a motion together. So the reports include it. And in the back, I guess at this point, is there anything that that staff would like to add to that report?
I guess there's really two things, your worship. There is that the report is kind of late for sure. Any budget requests are typically requested in the fall of the previous year. We did do something similar last year with Sordi, and they do a great job maintaining the trails, but it's kind of the timing isn't ideal. Having said that, if we had to find the money, we could. It does bring up a larger conversation that we probably should have a discussion about trails and and getting into agreements with somebody for care, whether that's Public Works, sorry, Derek, or if we're going to have provided annual grant to Sordi to maintain them. Something else we probably should get into is you're aware the trail crosses some private properties. You know, with 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 an agreement between Sordi and the landowners. But it may be in the town's best interest to get into agreements because at the end of the day, you know, it will be perceived as our trail and any long ongoing work. And for the life of it, you know, which will outdo anybody in this room for, you know, hundreds of years, hopefully this trail will be active. There should be something formally in place in agreement between those landowners and the town of St. Andrews.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spear. So the actual request is for $5,000. Is this something that would be available within the current town budget? Or this be something that would be in excess of it? Is there is there a way to absorb this, I guess, for council before we figure out how to proceed?
We did look and we haven't used all our assistance grants budget yet. This doesn't quite fit that definition, but certainly there's room there. And there hasn't been anything come forward as of late for that. So plus with some council projects and as we talked about earlier, the under utilization of a paving budget, we could certainly find room for it in the budget if council feels that it's something they'd like to pursue.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. And just one last question. So obviously, we did the upgrades to the the washed out portion on the other side of Katie's Cove. Did that hit this budget year? Was that the previous budget year that we would have recognized that? I'm just wondering how much we've already spent on trails for this year, just for council's consideration on how they want to proceed.
I think that was this budget year. I was trying to remember, but I think he completed that over the winter this year and had it ready for like April is what is what's come in my mind, but I honestly, time flies by so fast, like I can't quite remember.
That was approximately 75,000? No, yeah.
Yeah, roughly 65.
65? All right. So 65,000. That was in this budget year already spent on on the trails as well. So I I guess I'll look for council's direction. If you want a motion to come forward. Obviously, the trails are a wonderful asset to the town of St. Andrews. To maintain them, there is costs associated with it. In a perfect world, we would get this request at the beginning of the year. But with that being said, it doesn't take away from the great work that some of, you know, let's call them essentially volunteers are doing with some paid staff to maintain them. But also recognizing that the town of St. Andrews has already made a significant investment into trails for this particular financial year. So I'll be looking for you to get some consensus if you'd like to bring this request forward or you'd like for staff to let them know that that'll be part of our budget process for next year. Counselor Heenan.
I would like to see us bring it forward, considering what we had seen on Saturday and all of the determination and wonderful event that happened on Saturday. I think it's only it's only fitting that we bring it forward as a motion.
So all I need, thank you very much, Counselor. And so all I need is actually a second or for that, and that's would be enough to bring it forward. Is there a council hurdle second it? So we can debate that next week. I would say that we make the request for the $5,000. The current total in the budget is 3,700, but we can debate that all next week. So we'll bring that motion forward to our regular meeting. Thank you very much. The next one would be the Trail Development Projects and Public Consultation Discussion.
Thank you, worship. So there's going to be a more complete report, so we won't get too deep into it tonight, but I'll hit the key issues. The first thing, the same problem we've mentioned about the Wharf is happening here, too, that the public indigenous consultation is is completed, but is on hold because of the general election. I would like to note that our clerk, senior administrator, took that process and R D C had said it was one of the best documented ones they'd ever seen. So they're really appreciative of that. So thank you to him for that. So earlier, we had discussed that we're going to do Cemetery Road with the off off-road trail and cross partially through Katie's Cove. We still like to do that because of the weather, the timing that may get delayed now until next spring. But what council's going to have to come to terms with is how to do the public consultation for the rest. This is only a small portion of the total project. And Sordi, who's our partners in this, have recommendations on where they'd like to take it, but which has been presented to council before, but not this council. And so I will include their recommendations and just so you can see. And again, it hasn't been brought to you before. So for you that weren't on the previous council, it's probably news fairly new to you. But there were things like closing up Water Street and doing work around around the point and things that was part of their recommendation. So it was decided by the last council. They weren't ready to move on everything, but that they'd like to do a public consultation during this fall to get an idea with the public thought. That's good because some of it could has the possibility of changing some traffic patterns in town on a permanent basis. And so they wanted to have a review of it after the new council came in before any decisions were made.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Just what we did kind of around the RFPs for housing, I think what might be good for this council to do is actually do a session on the trails. So we can actually discuss where exactly we want it to go, give some projections on what the budget is, how far we can go. And then council can look at options. Are we doing the perimeter? Are we doing the downtown? Are we doing both? So that way we have a scope of it. I think this council needs to have an opportunity to look at that plan and find out exactly what we want to do. And on another note, I think it might be worthwhile for us also to let Sordi know that we're having that conversation. And if Sordi would like to present anything to council, I think it would be good to hear from them as well as a partner in it. I think there's a little bit of a discrepancy between how far this money can go, is my assumption. But let's have those conversations and then give clear direction on how we can proceed because before we go to public consultation, we need to make sure that all council is aligned on which way they want to go. Otherwise, we're just saying we're looking to expand the trail. I don't think it's going to give a whole lot. We had a conceptual plan that we had on the last council. Let's take it through this council and make sure. And again, the big concern is I don't think that there's enough money to do it all. But we'll we'll wait and hear on staff's report to see how we can go on that. But nonetheless, these are good problems because either way we are expanding the trail network. Any other thoughts on that one? I think I think a session and in some consultation with Sordi's needed before we proceed on a plan. Seeing that, let's let's do that then. All right, we are now switching to the Planning and Economic Development. That would be Counselor Heenan.
Thank you, your worship. This is Thank you, your worship. This is reference number P E D two one zero eight zero five by law twenty one dash oh four. A bylaw respecting encroachment upon public streets in the town of Saint Andrews first reading. Staff has been working on the development of encroachment by law to establish regulations on the use of town space. The bylaw provides an overview of rules, the process of applications, approvals, permitting, appeals and penalties. This bylaw, under the authority of council, will provide staff with necessary tools to review, approve or deny uses in public spaces, including roads, parks, sidewalks, easements, right of way, et cetera, owned by the town. Provided with the motion report is a draft copy of by law twenty one dash oh four. The motion, your worship, reads that council grants leave for first reading of by law twenty one dash oh four. A bylaw represented respecting encroachment upon public streets in the town of Saint Andrews.
Thank you very much, counselor Heenan. Any concerns on this one for the policy counselor hurdle?
Thank you. Just, just a point of information, not to bring this up for debate, but just so that I understand the scope of this by law. Which from my understanding would require a business who would like to put out a sandwich board to acquire one million dollar liability insurance and pay a hundred dollar fee. Am I corrected the scope of that?
Partially, but it's more for semi-permanent structures like chairs and, or not chairs, patios and stairs and things like that. For ninety nine point nine percent of businesses, a million dollars liability is going to be included in any type of business insurance anyway. I don't think you buy anything less. So that shouldn't be a concern for anybody.
Thank you.
Good question on that. Is it, go ahead.
Sorry, worship. I just want to make a point that in regards to like a, the sign, like a sandwich board sign. That actually falls under the zoning by law regulations and has its own sign permit process. So it's actually not part of that encroachment aspect, but could, depending on if they're asking for use of space of like town land, could come into a agreement within the approach process. So just to tell you that there are a couple of different processes within that.
Thank you. Is there an opportunity to a hearing of objections of this as well as this one that we're required on or it's up to us?
It's not a community planning act by law, and those are the only ones, and not even everyone there formally requires a public hearing. So this one does not require it, but it's obviously if council wants one.
I do think it was a best practice by the previous council that you have one anyway. There might be some businesses that have some good suggestions and some challenges that we're not thinking of right now. So personally, I would like council support to actually have a hearing of objections on that to hear from the public.
Worship, can I just make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I actually had the same concern that the counselor hurdle had with regards to the sandwich board. And having heard from town staff here, it doesn't make me feel any better. I, i, if it's covered in another area under another by law. I'm assuming there's, there's, there's some application that has to, a, 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 a business owner would have to go through to put up the sandwich board under, under what Mr. Nopper had indicated. I, I'm curious as to why this would be in here on, under the encroachment by law, if it's covered somewhere else. I, I, that was the one thing that jumped out to me. If someone has to put out a sandwich board because it is listed here, then they have to go through this process. And I do see, like, I'm trying to figure out, is this, has this been a problem? And if, if not, why are we creating an extra step for businesses in town to, and another hoop to jump through? To simply put out, let's say a sandwich board, for example, if, if we don't feel like that is something that would fall under this, then I, my recommendation where this is still a draft is that we remove some of those things. I, I get permanent structures. But temporary things like that, I, I was sort of questioning what the, what the need for, for something like this would be in, in those situations. So I, I do have some, some concerns about adding additional application processes, fees for what would to me seem like something fairly, fairly straightforward and fairly simple. And I don't see it as a problem on any of the sidewalks in town and I haven't heard any complaints. So I'm just trying to figure out why this, that would be necessary.
Thank you, counselor Blanchard. So you are right. There is indication on the sandwich boards as part of the zoning by law under signage requirements. I'll pass this over to staff at this point, just to comment specifically on this concern.
Sure. So I guess, so maybe just take it back to the very beginning. You understand what encroachment means is that people are putting structures on public property, so it's not on their own property. And so through this by law, at least previous councils felt there's times that little requests like a sandwich board sign would come in that they wanted to place on a corner or something. That it would supposed to, because we didn't have this, had to go to council to make that decision. And so you're basically assigning staff the ability for some of these basic requests. Anything that's major, we'd still come back to you. But let's say someone's got a building on Water Street, wants to come onto our property by three feet to add a, an accessibility ramp. Then we could access a grant of that. So back to, to the counselor's concerns about the liability, I guess it just goes back to remembering you're in a public place. And so if someone's walking along and trips over a sign, someone's going to get sued, the town first. And so it's hope that the business has liability insurance and so that they can be included. So to protect the taxpayer person, it's recommended in any of these cases that the users that are requesting this on town property has to carry liability insurance to protect, you know, not just the town as a corporation, but the taxpayers as the owners of the corporation, so to speak.
So just to add on to that, the point that are made by council members. So if I open up Brad's blockbuster video in downtown Saint Andrews and I want to have a, a sandwich board. I fill out my application to have my sign. Do I now have to as well fill out an application to encroach on the, on town land?
Only if you're using town land, then yes.
So for majority, almost all of the downtown businesses, the assumption would be that they would have to fill out two applications and pay two fees?
But again, we can work, if that's a major concern, we can do a bit of a rewrite on what conditions you would allow a sandwich board sign. If that seems to be your main concern, or we could eliminate the fees from our perspective, it's just to control what's going out on public property.
Yeah, I can completely understand, especially, especially liability. I think it's the, it's a sandwich board, so to go through two processes to get a sandwich board. I think that's what council's having a hard time maybe.
Technically, so it's offsite signs, which, which if you're using town property, your sign is inherently offsite unless through the town. They're only allowed by businesses not fronting on a public road. So there, there might be some businesses that are putting them up and, and shouldn't be, but I think for the most part that was put in there to allow the businesses in the kind of market square area to put sandwich board. So, oh, and the day adventure center.
Your worship, for instance, like
Yeah.
Currently, they, currently Tall Toms Lemonade put in for a temporary sign request. So they have a sandwich board sign on the corner of the hardware store building because we didn't have an encroachment agreement to allow them to put it on the street corner. So they actually had to put it on another private properties business to allow it for those purposes. Because they are not fronting on Water Street. They wanted a sandwich board sign, but because of traffic and flows at that corner where they wanted it, it was deemed not to be a smart move to put it on town land. So that's also part of the review processes, the location and will it cause an effect, traffic issues or walkability or other within town on property.
So with this particular by law, would it be safe to say that Tall Toms could put it on town land now out by the street front?
You're correct, your worship. This would give them an opportunity to apply for it and staff to review and approve an appropriate location that would meet their qualifications and the needs of the community.
And they seem like such small issues, but is there concern that every business in the day adventure center with this by law will be asking to put a sign up on downtown Saint Andrews? So when you walk at that corner, you see twelve sandwich boards?
Your worship, that, that is a quite a possibility, but that's where if they would, they would be recommended that the day adventure center group work together on one sign. And we would review that as, as, as a process. We don't, we don't want in a situation where you're going to have side businesses. So for instance, like if there was a business two streets up from Water Street that wanted a sign there, like on Water Street, you know, that would have to be a thorough review because they're not fronting a, a main road. So there's a lot of flexibility, but as well as a lot of opportunity that, you know, signs can be put out or other instruments. So for instance, the current walkarounds that we have, we actually had to create an agreement this year because we didn't have one for them to encroach. This would be a process for that to follow through on a normal basis. So that's just another example of what this encroachment agreement would entail.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Deputy Mayor Agage.
So this would mean that they give staff control of whether or not there would be, they sign boards on the corners.
Essentially, yes, that.
So.
It's to try to take some of the, you know, if council is okay with the by law, then it basically allows assigned staff the responsibility to do that instead of bringing every.
Thing back to council.
Yeah.
So we're giving you the, the assertiveness to be able to say a I, yes or no.
You're given the legal authority to be able to, to issue those permits and get into those agreements on behalf of council without bringing it to council every time.
Every time. Thank you.
Just one more point on this. The encroachment application would be reviewed by all senior staff to ensure that it is meeting the qualifications. So this would go through public works. So go through senior administrator, C A O spear, planning department to ensure that it's meeting all of the zoning by law regulations as well as anything that we need to review within publicly owned lands. Or building code as well.
Counselor Hurdle.
Just, yeah, thank you very much. Just what I just completely understand, like there was no way for a, 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 a non-fronted a business to put a sandwich board on public ground prior to this. This gives them a method to apply for that and to do it.
Correct. Okay. I'll actually take that a step further. I think the encroachment policies in the town of Saint Andrews have actually been fairly inconsistent over the, the time. This will provide some consistencies. I think there's patios that have been provided with one term and then another patio is provided with another. So to develop this policy, it is a way in which everybody will be treated, I will say equally. So it's definitely needed. And I will also acknowledge the fact that the timing by staff is perfect simply for the fact that if you're going to make a change to this, it should be in October, November or December. And when you go through three readings, that's exactly what the timing will be. We, this isn't something that you'd want to start playing around with in the spring where people have to fill out applications. So the timing's perfect on this. I, just the only concern is, is just to make sure that a sandwich board doesn't have to go through a bunch of processes. If there's a way to simplify that where you're not paying two fees and all that stuff, that, that was the overall concern that I heard from council. But it sounds like majority of the businesses won't be impacted by that.
Worship, just one quick comment, another question.
Pardon?
I had a quick, another quick question, your worship. I just, I don't know if you can see me or not there. I've had my hand up for a little while here.
I couldn't, I couldn't. So go ahead. Sorry about that, counselor Blanchard.
No worries, no worries. Just, just, so I'm clear here because town staff has talked about businesses that have frontage on Water Street. It, it sounds like they have some ability currently. So what would be the requirement for one of those businesses to put out, let's say a sandwich board, for example? Do they have that ability or do they have to come now? Do they have to apply through or, or go actually to council to do that? Or is there another process under the other by law we talked about with regards to signage? What is the process currently that they have to apply or, or go through to, to have, let's say a simple sandwich board in front of their property?
So if they're fronting onto a public street, they're not allowed to have an offsite sign in the zoning by law, so a sign that isn't on their property. So if they want to use the right of way, that would be a, a variance at least, probably for a temporary use. Or council may wish to amend the zoning by law at some point to allow for sandwich signs to be easier anywhere. To have offsite signs, but currently if it's on a public street, then you would have to get a variance. And I, I don't think any of those has been issued. There was a temporary use issued for Tall Toms, but that actually has, I believe it was Mr. Nopper pointed out, that was not on a public street that that was given.
So currently, like I said, the businesses on Water Street, they really essentially have no frontage. They have no, there is no private property. Is that what I understand? For those businesses that are fronting on essentially that sidewalk, that's all considered town, like their, their property ends at the, at the, at the building wall? Is that what he understands? So they would have, even though I see a number of sandwich board signs out there, so this is my question. They haven't had to go through that process up to this point. Now we're imposing a process by which essentially the majority of businesses in town will have to pay an additional fee and go through a process to put out what is essentially a temporary sign. As opposed to like, say a permanent sign where I can see or a permanent structure extending out and encroaching. I totally understand that. And I also understand, like I said, that those businesses that don't have that frontage and are looking for a, a, a method or a way to access, let's say town land, for example, like Tall Toms. But for the businesses that have been doing this, and I, you know, there are a number of them that put these out there. This will be something new and I, I don't know that it will be particularly well received. But that's just sort of my feeling. And this is again, sort of the first time I'm seeing it. So I haven't really had the chance to, to, to speak to people. But, but certainly to me, the, the temporary signage, except if there was a way through the zoning that we could amend the zoning by law so that, that we could allow for that. They wouldn't have to go through this process. I'd be more in favor of something along those lines than, than creating this and, and forcing everyone in town to, to have to pay an additional fee and go through this process. So that's sort of my feeling on where I'd like to see it go.
Thank you. Appreciate that, counselor Blanchard. Sorry, I see counselor Goomishell.
Your worship, there is, there is another side to the, so all this discussion on sandwich boards and wanting to make it easy. And it's late, I can't recall the, the old gentleman's name, but there was, there was an old fellow that lived on the front street. And every night he would walk to the, to the Savvy Z and he, he was vision impaired, but he had memorized the, the route and he had, he knew the number of steps. And he knew where all the signs were. And when new signs went out or when signs were placed in different spots, he used to get quite angry. I, he's been gone a while now and I can't remember his name, but it does, it does kind of highlight the idea that for us, the proliferation of signs downtown isn't necessarily great for everybody. The signs take up a part of the sidewalk. They should be, there should be uniformity in where they're, they're put. And there should be some, some thought put into the sign. So they're not just really nearly everywhere. And keeping it, trying to keep that in mind and keeping it accessible for everyone. And frankly, sometimes the, the signs, well, uniformity, I think some uniformity in their placement and their size and all that sort of stuff. Ultimately, we would come with discretion for the, the C A O. So there is, there, there is always another side to the story. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor Goomishell. All right. So what I'm hearing is that we, we, we like this by law, so we can bring it forward to first reading. But what we're looking is to simplify the process around the sandwich boards. I think that council has a, a concern over the something so simple of it's covered and approved throughout the zoning by law. To add an extra step to it is a little concerning. So I don't know if there's a workaround there around, you know, the fees or if there's some type of compromise there that can make this more palatable to the business community. I guess I'll get your thoughts on that, Mr. Spear.
To be determined, your worship. We hear council's message. So we'll just have to go back and reconcile the two and figure out how to make it work. We know what your ultimate goal is. So with knowing that, we'll just see how to make, make it work within our existing structure.
Sounds good. So we, we'll, we'll take it away at that. We've, I think we've talked about that one enough. Staff's heard our concerns around that particular item. And I think we all agree that if it's a, a deck or a ramp or a permanent sign, that we like what we're seeing. It's just a small technicality. And did I see counselor Heenan's hand or was there a hint?
Yes, your, your worship. I just wanted to say I agree with counselor Gormishaw. I'm not really fond of having to maneuver baby carriages around a lot of signs on Water Street. When I was on the mall board, there were, there was only a certain particular time, could you put a sandwich board out in front of your store? It was, it was issued by the mall itself. It was called like sidewalk days or something like that. We allowed it in the mall, but during normal operating procedures, there was nothing to obstruct traffic through the mall. And you take on the corner of William and you take on the corner of William and Water Street where everybody meets. If you have three or four sandwich boards out there, it does become a problem. So I think having a control on the sandwich boards is, is really a good route to go. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor Heenan. So we will, staff has, has heard us on that one. They're going to take a look at it and come back. And then of course, when this comes to first reading, we have the opportunity to debate it at that time. But since it's the first time we said it, it's good conversation to have before we bring it forward. Because sometimes when you bring something forward, people take it like it's third reading and it's a done deal. So to get it right, kind of going into first reading, that is obviously the ideal situation. We'll move along just in the essence of time and it will be the planning advisory committee motion.
Yes, your worship. It is P E D two one zero eight zero six appointment of the planning advisory committee. Council approved by law twenty one dash oh two, being a by law to establish a pa, a planning advisory committee for the town of Saint Andrews. Being a bylaw to establish a pa- a Planning Advisory Committee for the town of St Andrews on May the third, twenty twenty-one. With an enactment date of September one, two, oh, two, one. In order to proceed with the PAC. Council has to appoint members before the enactment period. Provided to council our application submitted for the opportunity to serve on PAC. It is recommended that council select six public representative and appoint one counselor to committee following the same structure as town council to be eligible. Um, town council, to be eligible citizen, bylaw twenty-one dash oh-two, section two bracket, C bracket. To be a member of the Planning Advisory Committee, a person, and person needs to be spelled better. Shall be, one, an eligible voter residing in the town of St Andrews. Or two, a member of council, agent or employee of the municipality. But three, the majority of advisory committee shall be other than such members, agents or employees as identified in section two. Motion that the council, uh, appoint the following citizens and counselor to the Planning Advisory Committee for the town of St Andrews. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Heenan. So, um, just on this motion before we bring it forward, we're going to have to, uh, insert some names into this motion. And, uh, first of all, um, we have a number of people that have raised their hand to serve the, the community. So, uh, very thankful for that. Um, you know, sometimes we issue, uh, certain committees, uh, and we don't have enough volunteers to actually, um, fully, uh, get that committee going. The fact that so many people in their community, uh, have raised their hand for this particular committee and it's, it's, it's not an easy one. You have to make some tough decisions. Um, it is greatly appreciated by the town. But that being said, not everybody that put in can be on this committee. Uh, so, uh, I do not want to get in a situation where we go through, uh, applicant and debate their merits and their qualifications publicly. I don't think that that's fair to anybody. So, um, what I wanted to do is just get a little bit of consensus from all of you on the size, uh, that we're looking for. But also, um, as well, uh, talk about, uh, a council representative on this particular committee. And then lastly, just a process in which we actually fill names in where we're not debating them individually. So the first thing is I, staff did put, um, one through seven. Personally, I think that could come from my discussions with them as well. Uh, town council is a committee of seven people. Um, to be quite honest, I think we've all been on boards and organizations where you have nine to eleven members and it's nine to eleven people weighing in and giving it a, it takes quite a while to get through all those opinions. Um, seven to me makes sense. It's what we are as a council. So to have a committee of seven, I think that it makes complete sense. Uh, uh, does everybody else, is there anyone that thinks that that's too many, not enough, or does seven sound good to everybody just as a balance for opinion? Apparently it sounds good here. And, and you could, anyone online have your thumbs up? Okay. So the, what I was thinking in this particular one is there's sometimes there's messages that council and communication that should be two-way. I personally think that there should be a representative of council on this committee. Uh, I, I don't think that you should go before this committee and it'd be in, you know, several members of council. But I think that one is good for that two-way communication. I know that staff will be present at this meeting as well. I don't think that staff being on this committee, although it is something we legally could do from my understanding. I don't think that that's a really good position to put staff in. I really don't. I think that we're the elected officials. Uh, staff is the one that actually has to implement exactly what is decided. So to make them be the decision maker plus it just puts them almost, it's not a conflict, but it, it, it could feel like a conflict. Um, and for myself, I, I think that one member of council is fine and I get, I'll be looking. This isn't me just saying, and I'll be looking for some input. I think one member of, of council suffice, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but Councilor Heenan, you are the, the chair of the Planning and Adv- Economic Development Committee. So to me, I think it's your first right to, to kind of consider that position. Unless some other member of council feels strongly in another direction, but I guess what I'm doing is just throwing some concepts before you. So does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I think that's a great idea, but it's up to Councilor Heenan if he'd like to be on the committee. And then if you should not be able to attend, have an appointee that goes in your stead.
I agree. All right, Councilor Heenan agrees. Anyone online have any, any concerns over this so far? I think Councilor Heenan being in charge that we're, we're trying to make these portfolios more of just not reading motions, but actually being active in, in your portfolio. I will say, uh, Councilor Heenan, they're going to meet, uh, every second day. And I'm kidding. So they're literally, you'll have a package for it. It's once a month and it might not be every month that it would be only if there's actually something relevant to St Andrews that we'd actually have that meeting. Uh, so thank you very much for raising your hand. I see no concern. So you would be one of those seven names. So what we have to do is determine six other individuals. And I don't, again, want to debate individuals on their merits, on their, you know, career experience. So what I was thinking we could all do is, um, send an email to myself. It can copy Mr. Nopper. And just, uh, we all have everybody's application, but just pick your six. Pick the six you'd like to see on this committee. Rank them one to six. Your first place vote gets, uh, six points. Your second place gets five. That will give everybody an input on who they really would like to be on this committee. And then at the end of it, it will actually give us six names and those are the six names who ring forward. And of course it is a motion. So you do have the right to debate it if you don't like it, but it's a way in which everybody here has a voice. The only thing that I'd like to add in is staff works with these individuals a lot. I would like to give staff the opportunity combined to actually put a list in as well. Um, so they rank their one to six. And again, you know, I, they're the ones that spend so much time with them. I'm fine having that extra person put votes in. Uh, and then we'll, uh, we'll tally it up and get the six names. Does anyone have any concerns? I just think it's democracy.
Worship, just a quick question, actually. Just on the, the names that we've been provided, not to debate, not debating any of them. Um, have all these, have all the individuals been vetted against the, uh, um, the, uh, what, what it states in bylaw twenty-one dash zero-two in terms of eligibility? Uh, I did see, it, it does say they need to be an eligible voter residing in the town of St Andrews. One of the, uh, one of the names that I saw actually had an address in Sham Cook. So I wasn't sure if we've gone through all that because, and, and whether they're all okay or, or if that needs to be, that needs to be checked out.
No, it, it, you are correct on that one. So there is one person that would be, uh, the one that you're, that you're referring to. Uh, Mr. Nopper will send an email out to everybody. Uh, and there is also someone who is, uh, new in the community that, uh, uh, someone had some questions on. So he's actually done some follow-ups with, uh, some of the references as well. So Mr. Nopper will send an email out to all of us kind of, uh, early tomorrow morning. I hate to put the time crunch on all of you, but if you like this plan, I'd really like to get them back by end of day tomorrow. The reason why is because, uh, I guess we have till Friday, right? With the package? Is it Thursday, the package? Get them to you Thursday. So, uh, basically why don't we say end of day Wednesday? I need them to me and then I can get them off you, Mr. Nopper Thursday. If you don't do this exercise, I'm going to just assume that you are entrusting the rest of your council members to make that decision for you. So, um, Mr. Nopper will send out the information on who's not eligible, but he'll also put the, 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 the deadline in that for you. Send the email to me and Mr. Nopper will consolidate it. Uh, and then also we'll send those results out to all members of council. We'll put council member one, two, three staff. We'll, we'll, we'll give you, so you have the visibility behind it as well. It's not just a closed, kind of closed door decision. You all get an input. Then the six names will come forward with Councilor Heenan's and then we can vote on it. I just think that that's the easiest way than getting individuals. Does anyone have any concerns of that process? You all have a voice. That's good. All right. I think we're good on that one.
Your worship, just one point of clarity. That Councilor Heenan had said about if he wasn't able to attend, that you'd have a backup counselor, but that's actually not allowed underneath the act. They'd have to be a full member of the, you know, appointed by council and stuff. So I guess we can always not have a meeting if that case comes into fruition. But you either have two members or you really can't have a standby or alternate member under the act from our interpretation of it.
Okay. So Councilor Heenan, you just have to catch every single meeting. Uh, no, I, I think we're fine with that. I, I, I think the schedule will work out, but B, even if it doesn't, I think staff report will probably indicate council's wishes as well to the P A C. Okay. So we are now getting into number three under this one, which would be the discussion on bylaw twenty-one dash oh-one respecting short-term rentals. P E D twenty-one, oh, eight, oh, eight. Staff is looking for some direction for us. Did you want us to get into that this evening or did you want to do that next week?
Uh, it's, uh, your choice, your worship, but, um, they probably should come for a full discussion at the regular council meeting as per to have full debate. But staff will be seeking direction from council as to how you would like to proceed with this bylaw.
Sounds good. And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a number of different options. So, so what staff's looking for is this was, uh, obviously a bylaw that the previous council spent a significant amount of time on. It made it as far as second reading and that's where it got stuck. It just ran out of time, uh, and there was no decision. So it's kind of sitting in limbo right now. It's getting kind of that time clock where you should do something. So there's a number of options. You could, um, you could technically, you could take it to third reading and approve it. You could technically take it to third reading and defeat it, or you could just do simply nothing and let it stay in second reading. Is that correct? So there's.
Through you, your worship, that's correct. I've also provided one additional option that you can take it to further public consultation. If you would like, it still remained at second reading.
Sounds good. Um, so I guess I won't, uh, won't enter debate on that. So you want to have a more formal, uh, conversation at the regular meeting? Is that safe to say?
That's correct, your worship.
Okay, but there won't be a motion. It'll be just like a conversation.
Just a conversation and then seek direction from there.
Sounds good. We knew that day would come. So I guess it's going to be, uh, on next Wednesday.
Sorry, just real quick. Would you like staff to do some type of presentation at the meeting or just provide a report that council can work off?
Uh, I, I, I don't want to speak for Deputy Mayor Axie and, and Council Gomishel. I think they're probably good. So I guess I'll, you know, open the floor to them, but also to new council members, because it's, it's not fair for me to assume anything on that one. Would, would new council members prefer to have a presentation or do you already kind of have a mindset of what you'd like to do? So Councilor Heenan has a mindset. Any other council would like to see a presentation? Does everybody feel like they know what they'd like to do? Uh, Council, Council Gomishel has a hand up.
Question, um, can it just hang at second, uh, reading? Could we like put it off for a year? Basically, I mean, with COVID and everything, could we just say, we're going to table this for a, for a determined, uh, period of time and we'll come back at it next September when we don't have so much heavy lifting going on and things are a little bit more clear with, uh, with COVID and whatnot. So just kind of table it for a year. Is that, is that a possibility?
We, we don't have to do anything with it. We can, we can literally just leave it like this for, forever. There, there is a time, uh, line, but maybe not with this one because of the way it is. Literally sit for three years and then we just bring it back to third reading.
Obviously, your worship, what staff would like, if you just want to sit on it for a long time, just defeat it and we'll start it from scratch. It's just as easy. Because if you have a bylaw that's in just two readings, two and a half years ago, everyone's forgotten about it. So.
A little unusual, but how many people here would like to bring this bylaw forward or how many would like to defeat it? Cause that might just make us bring a motion forward next week. Is there anyone that would like to see this motion go forward? Uh, to be approved or for consultation? Um, if you do, uh, if you want to raise your hand, I'm going to ask after if you'd like to just bring it forward to defeat it as well. Just so staff knows how to word the motion. Any, any preferences at this time or some just not sure at this point? I don't want to put you on the decision making right now if you don't want to be. I'll look for some, uh, some feedback. So how many would like to, uh, let's just go this way, uh, Council Gomishel said it. How many would like to just defeat this bylaw and bring it back? Can we ever want to implement the short-term rental bylaw? So I'm seeing nobody would like to defeat it. Is that safe to say? How many would like to bring this bylaw forward, uh, to have it debated for possibly implementing it? Not getting much here right now.
I can just, uh, without putting my hand up for either one, your worship, can I just make a comment?
Yes, absolutely. By all means.
Um, certainly in its present form, I, I would not support it going forward as it is. Um, so I, I, I guess in its present form, I would, I would sort of lean more towards defeating and starting. I don't know if I want to start from scratch. I think there are maybe elements within it that, uh, I, I could see some value to having some kind of a, a bylaw in effect, but there's, right now for me, there's too much there that I don't support. So, so, uh, again, whether it's, I don't know whether it would better, be better to amend or to start from scratch, to be quite honest. And, and it would be helpful where, you know, I have read and reviewed sort of the previous, uh, the, the bylaws it was with the previous council. But I don't have all the background and there's, I do have some questions. So if there is some additional information, I don't necessarily need it in, 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 in the form of a presentation at, at, uh, at our next meeting. But if there is some background information to report something else that I could go through aside from the bylaw itself. If I could get that from, from town staff, that would be, uh, that would be beneficial to me, uh, be helpful to me. But, uh, but I, I'm, I'm unsure as to whether amending or, or simply scrapping altogether would be, would be, would be the best way forward. And I sort of refer to previous council members and, and, and our existing council.
This, this would be just my recommendation. And again, take it for what it's worth. If you're going to alter this bylaw after second reading and go to third reading, and the fact that this council hasn't actually had a public session of consultation. I would recommend that you defeat it. And if it's something you want to bring back, you bring back and go through the entire process as a council. Where you ourselves collected the feedback from the community, but also tailored the bylaw in a way in which that we're all comfortable doing. But it's something that we own the whole process on versus amend something in second reading. Like really the consultation's been done and done and done on the way it stands today. If we want to change it, I, I really think especially with the time delay. That the best thing we could do is go back to first reading. If that's something you want to, and if you defeat it, you can bring it back to first reading in six months, which Council Gomishel said about a year. To be honest, I almost think that that's the, there's been such a delay and there's a turnover of people personally. I think that this council, if it's something you want to implement, we should go through the whole process together as a council. And I know that's kind of scary to staff because they've lived it.
Yeah, just worship and the priorities of this council could change. Your worship, if you remember the last council, one of the things they were concerned about was the, how many, um, short-term rentals that were being made available at the cost of converting long-term rental units out. Which is legitimate, but then we ran into issues and that was actually kind of taken out by the end of it all. And so your recommendation may be good. So you can kind of, instead of getting into the nitty gritty of the details, we look at what the purpose of it is. And then staff and council can create a bylaw based on your priorities, just not trying to amend a document that frankly changed dramatically between each reading anyway.
And, and that's what scares me the most is even from when we had the hearing objections to the document that we had going into third reading, it wasn't the same document at all. Councilor Heenan, but I know Mr. Nopper has up that, but we'll go to Councilor Heenan first.
Uh, thank you, uh, your worship. I just want to say that whatever we do as a council, we want to be prepared to open a hornet's nest. If we, if we go back and we try to, uh, resuscitate this, um, this bylaw. Because, um, it was a hot item for months. And all I'm saying is prepare thyself if, if we do anything about it. That's just all I'd like to say, your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Heenan. I, I was on that hornet's nest, so I can concur to those comments. I got stung. I, I got stung a couple of times.
If I could jump in, your worship, I, I, I would have been all in favor of, of, uh, feeding this, this motion. But we had some recent communications from, uh, some town residents with some, with some very, you know, valid concerns. Um, stated, uh, quite, quite eloquently or, uh, uh, good, uh, some good correspondence that kind of gave me pause and, and, uh, made me think about it a, a little bit more. But, uh, COVID's been a big, big disruptor. And I, so i- if we perhaps defeating it and then, and, and starting over because the, the, the playing field seems to, to be changing, but we, we do have to have some, uh, some things in place for, uh, that, that, that one lady in particular who took the time to write in. And, and also, uh, we could also be reaching out to other people in town, um, who are affected by short-term rentals. And, uh, how it affects their insurance and how it affects their quality of their, their property. There are, there are issues there. So maybe, maybe it is back to the old drawing board. I don't, or postponing, I don't know. I guess I'm of two minds.
Thank you, Councilor Gomishel. Uh, through town, uh, staff, Mr. Nopper, Mr. Spear. Uh, is it safe to say that we'll have another year of, because of the tourism accommodation levy to see what the growth is on short-term rentals in the town of St Andrews over the next six months? Meaning we'll be able to see, did it grow 10%? Did it shrink 10%?
Your, your worship, giving it an extra year will give us extra data to be able to make a judgment call on, on a, on a more, that will give us three years of data on short-term rentals through the tourism accommodation.
So therefore if you're looking to limit the number, you would be able to probably have better data to support what that number would be. Um, okay. So, uh, the next question I have for staff, is there a way to bring this motion based on what I'm hearing from, from council? Is there a way to bring this motion forward that indicates that the intent or the potential intent doesn't mean it's going to? Is council is to defeat it versus take it to third reading? Is there a way there to say that council, you know what I mean? Just so that way. Anyone that read the package doesn't think we're pushing this through without any consultation? Because if they see the, the package, they're going to be like, council's implementing it. And, and that's not what I'm hearing from council today.
No, under normal circumstances, just bring it forth, the third reading and defeat it. I, I understand what you're saying, but you usually don't have a negative motion when it comes to bylaws. It's just it gets defeated at some reading. Yeah, that's a good question. I, we can ask to see if we can make a negative motion, but that's not very typical.
Yeah, you, you know where I'm getting at this. We put this in a package and. Yeah, you, you know where I'm getting at this. We put this in a package and send it out. You're going to get forty to fifty phone calls of people saying that council's pushing this through. That, that's the concern of this. Uh, I don't like leaving it in limbo because it, it, to be honest, it gives clear direction to staff on what we, if we're not going to do it, we should own it, not do it. It goes that simple.
Y- Y- Your Worship, um, the, the discussion, like, if you were, it's right not to put a negative motion on. However, we can word it within the body of the, uh, motion report for what has been discussed here as the indication. And then council can debate it. And then at that point, council could choose to defeat it or choose to pass it. But based on the discussion and then the feeling here, it is sort of leading towards the defeating aspect. So we can word it within the, the body of the, of the report to give what has been indicated here. So that when the public does hear the discussion during the regular council meeting, they'll have a better understanding of what was discussed here tonight.
Does that sound good to everybody? I think that's the best we're going to get for a compromise on this one. Uh, seeing head nods. Anyone got any other concerns? Okay, so that, Mr. Knopper, I'm just double checking. I think that's how we'd like to proceed, if we could. Okay. All right, uh, Counselor Hurdle, I guess can come back in. That wraps up the motion. So we are into the review of the registers and communication discussed at the regular council meeting. I don't think it's.
So, so Your Worship, my apologies, uh, coming back from vacation, I completely forgot to add the, uh, registers to the back of the package. So we won't have them for this committee meeting. My, my apologies.
We were really hoping to be here for a full three hours. Is there anything urgent on, uh, is there anything urgent on that, uh, register that, uh, any member of staff or council would like, council could think of previous things, but staff would like to bring forward?
To our recollection, there's not, Your Worship. If there's anything that we think council has to discuss, that I can't wait for like, you know, the next meeting after the regular meeting, we'll add it on a new business for, for discussion or decision at that point in time, the next council package. But it is our practice, anything that we decide is needed, um, is added to, to the committee meetings. So everything else, as you know, is either A, B, or C on the, um, register list. Everything else is probably B and C at this point in time on the priority list.
Perfect. And just one more last check. Everyone for council, good with that? Okay, we're all good. Um, nothing under new business question, period. Anything from our, our packed audience? We're good. It's easy when one can answer. Anything that has come in online?
Worship, we have received no emails, correspondence for questions from the public.
We'll move on to counselors' comments. Counselor Deputy Mayor, any comments? I see Counselor Heenan.
I'm just wondering if it's possible that we could send a town thank you to the dragon boat folks for all the efforts that they put in to make that happen. Is that a possibility or?
It is. I'll work with the, uh, with the town clerk and we'll draft up a letter and send that off to them with their gratitude. Uh, however, I will indicate that I think we should protest as I do think that the zero point four seconds was highly inaccurate that we lost by. But we'll, uh, we'll let that go. We want to be good sports, but I do have several camera angles that really question those results. What was their names? The Commodores? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, those Commodores. All right. Uh, just for, for my comment, it does go in, in, in touch with that. I know Deputy Mayor Akaji alluded to it in the previous meeting. But, um, I know that staff was on a, a mini committee to kind of come up with the town appreciation day. Um, Mr. Knopper, Mr. Spear, I know, uh, Mr., uh, Fire Chief Terry was on it. Um, there was a number of different, uh, members of town staff that were involved in planning that. Um, Jamie Steele, uh, Mr. Sim- Simmons, you talk about the dragon boat. Um, there was a lot of different people that, that came together to make that day special. Sorty with the trail opening. There was a lot of activity going on, but, uh, the town was extremely busy. Uh, and I think the town was over, it was extremely safe as well. Uh, but I can say that after a year and a half of just canceled event, canceled event, canceled event, it was really nice to see everybody get together, celebrate everything that we have to be thankful for. And probably the group that I'm most thankful for at the end of the day that I do want to recognize right now is the St. Andrews Fire Department. Not only did they do breakfast in the morning, but when we watched those fireworks and they're going up in the air, there's people actually underneath them making sure that the war is safe, but also that they're still pointing in the right direction. And they're literally under that spectacular thing of beauty, but with that comes a lot of danger. So I understand that they're not sitting there with their families like I were watching them. They're on their own, kind of with each other, uh, being there for the community. And most of those people are volunteers and I can't stress enough how fortunate we are. There's a hundred different reasons we are. But we're very lucky to have the St. Andrews Volunteer Fire Department and everything that they do for the community. So that's my comments. I don't think we need to go to closed session. Oh, we do have to go to close. Of course we do. Okay. I'll need a motion to go to closed session. I see Deputy Mayor Akaji, a second, or we'll be Counselor Gomishaw, just beat you by a moment. Uh, and, uh, all in favor of going to closed? That's everybody who are in closed session. Closed session. I see Counselor Blanchard, uh, second, or Counselor Hurdle, uh, all those in favor of coming at a closed session, please signify by saying aye. And we are all at a closed session. So at this point, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Akaji, a seconder. I see Counselor Blanchard, uh, all in favor of adjourning. Please signify by saying aye.